Two, one.
Good evening, six thirty P M, October eighth, twenty twenty five. I call the Select Board Regular Business Meeting to order. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
You have, you have stated. The City of Charlotte, the Pledge of Allegiance, one nation, one God, and we will be in this one. We will be just.
Thank you. This meeting is being broadcast live on T C T V Cable Station Eight and on the YouTube web platform. A recording will be available on T C T V YouTube channel later on. Is anyone else recording meeting? And if everyone would please silence your phones at this time. Thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of prior meeting minutes for nine twenty four, twenty twenty five, and nine thirty, twenty twenty five. I would entertain the motion to approve the meeting minutes of nine twenty four, twenty twenty five, and nine thirty, twenty twenty five as presented.
Promoted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Tough?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Um, yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This time, I would entertain a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes of nine twenty four, twenty twenty five, and nine thirty, twenty twenty five, as presented, and to be released to the public.
Promoted.
Second.
Please, please, me.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yeah.
Mr. Tough?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
No.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next item is citizen input. How many? We have two? Three? One?
Three, Griffiths, twelve, Dory Lane. Good evening, Board. Welcome, Mr. Ryan. And we haven't fun yet. Not to put any more work on your already overtaxed time, but what brings me here tonight, I've been considering for months, and I just don't know when a good time would be to voice my concern. I'm not prepared with a rough draft or anything, but it might be beneficial to have a volunteer exit survey. Sorry, sorry. Have a volunteer exit survey, whether, if you serve on a board or a committee, to help people debrief from their service and to keep a record of unfinished business that they may have been responsible for or care about. It's my personal belief to leave on good terms and to help the next people in line, in, in this case, Board. Uh, there are a few things that I left undone. Um, one, the Gardner Sledge landfill expansion, D E I R, is still open. And the second round of responses, uh, we're awaiting the second round of responses. Uh, Gardner has to vote to the money to get the responses answered. Then we will have one last chance to respond, and then that's it. And then we won't get a response, but the last, we'll have one last chance to voice our concerns if we didn't have our needs met or what have you. Twenty-four Holman Street and everything tied to clean businesses zoning. As I reflected on my time on the Board and moving forward to what naturally falls in my lap, I have three point, uh, lap. I have three points left to make. We haven't completed our hazard mitigation plan. Um, due to new knowledge, uh, that we share an aquifer with Barry, and they're, uh, looking at a potential, uh, fight for a lithium battery plant that has been proposed in Barry on that shared aquifer. Um, Barry, um, has already lost one well and must replace a well. I ran into Jeff Legro and, um, started talking to him about that. And, um, he's working with Rich Curtis to finish the hazard mitigation, and it didn't dawn on him to, you know, we, we care about our water, our air, uh, but we didn't have a, that on our plan to protect our aquifers. So that was one thing that came up going forward. I think my last point should be, and I'm trying to be a bit funny here, is we should protect and pay attention to our aquifers and to our borders. Um, we have Carm ninety-seven to the north along the Millers. Um, and along the Otter, we have landfills and now a lithium plant, um, to our south. I do believe that we have very competent, um, people in charge to keep track of these things, the Water Department, the Conservation Commission, and that they should, uh, you know, talk to each other and get updates regularly, like on the one four dioxane, uh, leak. So I believe the, uh, Templeton, majority of Templeton residents who participate in town government and actually show up would agree protecting our water, land, and air is always in the front of our needs. Um, lastly, there are three, uh, citizens petitions that are left off the found Fall Town warrant that were certified and put in the vault in May. And I would ask, uh, the Board to please consider and make sure that they get on the special town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Appreciate you. I appreciate you.
Hey, Liz, though, Gray Road. So, um, welcome.
Thank you.
Really excited that you're here.
Great, thank you. Me, too.
Yeah, so it'll be good. Um, so, um, I, I know further down in the agenda, there's a conversation about town, uh, credit cards. Now, uh, I'm speaking as an individual, and I want to stress that looking through the, what has been spent, um, is from, from a total perspective. So we got Amazon Capital Services. I realize it's not really a credit card, but it still falls into that same sort of credit situation of over thirty-five thousand dollars that was spent last year. American Express, over eighty-eight thousand dollars, and then you have Capital One Trade Credit, over three thousand seven hundred dollars. And I, I honestly believe that, I, I don't think, this does not provide transparency. Um, it doesn't provide the ability to be able to really monitor what's going on. People can't see it. There's all sorts of stuff that gets thrown in there, whether it's supplies or, or uniforms or who knows what. And I, I think we need a much tighter control over what gets spent, how it gets spent, and, and what happens. So, um, as a taxpayer, I think eighty-eight thousand dollars for American Express is a bit much. Um, I, I've seen what some of those bills are. I don't think they should be going through credit cards. The response I had gotten back when I asked about it, um, from a department head was basically, well, you know, they don't, they, you know, the vendors, you know, insist on a credit card. I'd like to see that in writing. Where does it say that? We, these should all be going through, through other means, and should, we shouldn't be using credit cards for them. And, um, again, I don't know what, uh, Mr. Ryan's comments are going to be on later on. I, I think credit cards and all sorts of, um, um, any kind of credit the town has needs to be very tightly controlled, you know, whether it's the, the trade, you know, the, the trade accounts or anything else. Um, and I, I don't think we have enough control over it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Al Winchester Street. Well, like Liz, I, I have questions, too. And things like, um, we buy, uh, office supplies from Staples and W B Mason, probably other things on a regular credit card, but other companies are, um, usually make a contract with these people. Um, or they have a central supply and just have the guy come in and stock it once a week or once a month. So that's another area of improvement. Another thing, and I know you're going to talk about the website later. I, I don't see any actuals. I think I read about it in the town report that the accountant had F Y twenty-five available or reconciled, but I don't find anything on the website so that we can look at it. Okay?
Thank you.
Ready, the citizen input? Onto new business. Uh, have an introduction for new employee. It's Mr. James Ryan. He's the new town administrator. He was appointed, uh, officially by the Board to a three-year term, beginning September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, to September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty eight. He came in that day. He's been playing catch-up, finding his way around, uh, the office, uh, multiple email accounts, talking with department heads. Uh, Mr. May took him out, uh, for a ride around town. He's put in a lot of, uh, a lot of work and effort on a few things so far, and it's reflected on, uh, five or six things on the agenda, uh, that he is wanting to look at and wanting to work at. And it was apparent during his interview process that he had done his homework on the town, and, uh, he continues to do this. So, Mr. Ryan, uh, first of all, uh, on behalf of the Board, thank you very much for applying and for, for coming to work here.
Well, so thank you very much for having me. Uh, it's my pleasure to be here. It's my pleasure to begin meeting all of you and, um, the, uh, other residents I'll eventually meet and other Board members. And, um, I don't want to say too much now because I have, um, more to say during my town administrator's report, so I don't want to ruin that. Um, but I just want to say right now, at this moment, uh, I'm very happy to be here. I want to really thank this Board for the opportunity. Um, getting to know all of you as well, and I, I think we're going to have, uh, I think we have a good time. So, thank you for having me, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have about a minute for a poll hearing. This is to the public hearing. When we open it, anyone who wishes to speak will be allowed to speak. It concerns the moving, uh, or adding, uh, a utility poll for both Templeton Municipal Light and Verizon Communications. Mr. Tom Berry is here, uh, as he's been, uh, many times, uh, to present, uh, the information to the Board. So at this time, Tom would be, you can come up. Hey, it's repairing himself. He lives on Shady. So, uh, as in the, the last, uh, poll hearing that we had, uh, back in May, entertain a motion to open the poll hearing. Once we do, we will hear from the presenter and any abudders who are here to speak for or against the poll. Uh, we, the Board can ask questions, but we do not debate until the poll hearing is closed.
Promoted.
So. What motion for opening the poll hearing for the purpose of Templeton Municipal Light and Verizon Communications adding a utility poll on Shady Lane at Burn Street?
Yes, sir.
The motion, is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? On the motion to open, uh, enter into a public hearing for a utility poll, how would you vote, Mr. Tough?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm Tom Berry, uh, Superintendent with the Light Department. First, I just want to say welcome, Mr. Ryan. I look forward to meeting you.
Thank you, sir.
A little bit more in the future.
Yes, sir.
So tonight, I'm here to get permission to add a utility poll on Shady Lane, uh, at the end between our existing poll numbers thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Uh, the purpose of that is to run primary power down to a, uh, structure being built at number four, Burn Drive. Um, there are existing poles already on Burn Drive, uh, but we'd like to run primary power down there, which takes, uh, you know, certain guiding and, and positioning of the poles. Um, so you can see, um, it's about seventy-five feet, uh, south of Route, uh, excuse me, seventy-five feet south of pole thirty-seven. Uh, and then from there, the wires will go to the poles on Burn Drive. Um, the pole on, the new pole will also have a push brace pole to guide the wires going down Burn Drive.
And Burn Drive is a, a private road.
Correct, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions from the Board? Are there any abudders here? Yes. Could you, could you, uh, move up to the microphone, please?
Okay. Great, Hatfield.
Are you speaking in favor of the poll or?
I'm here to find out more about it, to understand how it affects my property.
Uh, it's close to Burn Drive?
I am two hundred Shady Lane, so I am directly across the street.
Okay. So you, you, you just wanted?
Yep, I was invited, so I've come to find out about this. Yeah.
Okay, so you're not against it?
I didn't know anything about it, so that's why I'm here to find out.
Thank you.
And Sheriff, hey.
Two hundred.
Okay, yeah, I see. So that's across the street. So it looks like the poles are across the street from your property.
Yes.
So there'll be, uh, an additional pole in the pole line across the street from your property. Yeah, that's, that looks like where we're talking.
Is there any, will it do anything to impede, um, like snow plowing? Um, the, any tension on the poles that come across my property?
No, uh, it shouldn't. It's going to be on the town road, uh, right away, like, like the existing poles that are there. Um, so there'll be plenty of room, yeah, to clear the snow from Shady Lane. Um, and it's going to be in line with the poles. Um, so there won't be any adverse push or pull on the lines going to your property. I see the, I see where your line comes.
Yeah, it goes, uh, yeah, the, the green line that goes all the way up to the two hundred, that goes all the way up to my house.
Yep. It won't affect that.
Okay. Is there any extra voltage? Um, I, I know sometimes when power goes out, I'm the very last, uh, I'm the very last pole at the end of the line. So, um, with, with more, um, buildings and structures, is there, is there, I guess, more potential for power outages if tree limbs come down? Um, responsiveness from the town repairing?
No, it won't. There'll be another two spans of the, the primary. It'll, it'll be, uh, fused at the street.
Okay.
Um, so if there's an issue on the new line that we run down Burn Drive, you know, that will be fused, um, and it should not take out the whole road.
Okay.
Um, as, as far as response time, it's, it really won't affect it.
So I guess my, my only other question, um, it says the, the, the pole is for the Municipal Light and Verizon? What is Verizon's, uh, interest?
Um, that's because they're going to have to attach to it because they are attached to the poles already on Shady. Um, so when we, they're, they're actually joint owners of all our poles.
Okay.
Um, so when we put it up, we have to get permission from them, um, to take joint ownership of it because they will be required to attach to it. Comcast, on the other hand, is attached to the pole also, but they're not owners. They're just a user that they pay a, a fee to be on the pole.
Okay.
That answer your, your concerns?
I think that has answered what I came to find out about, yes.
Okay, so you're, you're all set now?
I, I am set, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ready, Tom?
Yep, that's all I have.
This time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion come out of public hearing? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. Tough?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
I vote yes. This time, I would entertain a motion to allow the poll to be, to be added by Templeton Municipal Light and Verizon Communications.
Second, I'm first. I'm moved. There you go. And second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. Tough?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I go ahead, Tom. Thank you.
Try the bomb. This bomb, I'll convince.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up is the Finance Quarterly Report.
I'll go first.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Um, I'm Justice Graves Deputy Assessor. So for our first quarter, our first quarter in the assessor's office, it has been a pretty typical first quarter. The preliminary bills for the first and second quarter were committed, and that totaled over, just over seven million dollars, um, for real estate, personal property, and community preservation tax. For the first quarter, over one hundred and thirty-six thousand was committed for motor vehicle excise tax, with just over seven thousand being abated. Applications for statutory exemptions are now being taken in the office. So if you have not come down or if you applied last year, you need to apply again because that is an annual action, um, or an annual application that you have to do. These would be for your senior exemptions or you're blind or anyone who is a disabled veteran, um, or a surviving spouse. Um, you can always call our office if you have any questions about the guidelines, and we would be more, we would be more than happy to help you. Um, the application period does run until April first of twenty twenty-six by statute, but if you get them in earlier, um, we are able to apply that to the third and fourth quarter, which may be easier for residents in terms of budgeting for their, for their tax bills. So if you know someone that has applied in the past, or if you don't remember if you've done it or not, you can just call our office and we'll be happy to guide you through with that. That, um, reminders were sent out to our service-connected disability veterans, um, as a reminder on that. And blind exemption paperwork was also sent out for our returning blind applicants. And at the end of August, our office did send out annual applications for our Chaplaind owners, specifically chapters sixty-one A and sixty-one B. Sixty-one A is anyone engaged in horticulture or agriculture, and sixty-one B applications are for recreational. Chaplaind applications are due by December first of twenty twenty-five. Tax rate recap, the Board of Assessors have been submitting work into Gateway that has been approved by the Division of Local Services. That is our L A three, our interim adjustments and sales analysis. Our assessment reports have been approved, and new growth was certified for a hundred and five thousand five eighty-six this year, um, which is down, but is still, um, over what was anticipated. And information that people usually like to know is what one dollar on the tax rate raises. So for this year, one dollar on the tax rate will raise one million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. This, in two thousand and twenty-five last year, um, it raised one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifteen. So that way, people are aware of that. And for our sales this year, um, July twenty twenty-three through June of twenty twenty-five are used for this year's sales analysis. Property visits are continuing due to new construction. However, in this quarter alone, we have not received any occupancy permits, and those homes remain under construction right now. Um, in comparison, at this time last year in the first quarter, we had one new single-family home that had received occupancy, and back during fiscal year twenty twenty-four, there were five by this point. Um, in comparison, if we're looking at overalls from the years, I can tell you that in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, there were four supplemental bills that went out, and in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, there was fifteen. Um, I have seven outstanding new homes or, you know, major constructions that I'm looking at. And one of the major ones that you all are aware of is the Baldenville Elementary School Project, um, which is still ongoing, and they, you know, the deeds have been recorded. They were reported during the last quarter, um, in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and that project is still ongoing. Um, but that is one major project that we're looking at. But in comparison from years to years, I just wanted to make the Board aware of what's been going on with that. Um, most building department has been getting a lot of building permits. I mean, I've been physically seeing it with people coming in and asking for plot plans and, you know, different information about their properties. But a lot of what I'm seeing is routine maintenance, and I would be curious to do a cer, to survey what I've been seeing coming out of the building department because I recognize a lot of these neighborhoods, and it would be about time that some of these neighborhoods would need to do some, um, repair on their homes typically. Um, so that's just something that I've been noticing in the office, and again, just wanted to make the selectmen aware of that. Other than that, during the quarter, we finished up our cyclical inspections with our new field inspector. Um, so we are all set for our fiscal year twenty twenty-six deadline, so that is good. Um, so we will start planning for our fiscal year twenty thirty-six deadline. And, um, thank you to Brady for his help on this work. Um, he finished up the last precinct and the last three major, um, roads that needed to be done with that, and that worked out well for us. Additionally, within the quarter, we had one senior work-off employee working on two projects. One was compiling a report of town prop, working to get some information for a report on town properties, and the other one was for digitizing our abstract deeds and probate records. In August, I attended a D O R tax rate recap workshop, um, as well as an event for the Western County Assessors Association and, and our administrative. And, and our administrative assistant has started to work on what we want to be a fiscal year twenty twenty-six report of town properties, um, to be a tool for the town. So that's what we've been working on. Are there any questions from the board?
I have, um, almost said. Almost said.
Ju- Justice, I think it's great that some of the senior work on is accomplishing some of the goals that we've been wanting, like digitizing records and, um, the asset inventory. That's a great achievement.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Justice.
Goodness.
Justice. I don't know if you guys, but I did finish the quarterly revenue report today. Leave it up here. Come on.
I did send it.
Good evening. Happy anniversary, Town Accountant. Um, so I've only been here a month of the quarter, so mine's certainly gonna be a little shorter than what you're used to. Um, there's been a lot of transition, just trying to figure out how the town of Templeton operates and try and get things back up to speed. Um, for me, training and education is a top priority, especially if they're free. Um, so we did attend several trainings this quarter, including an opioid settlement webinar, the tax rate. Training, balance sheet checklist, Bay State Roads Municipal and Capital Budgeting, the big beautiful Bill Lunch and Learn and the niche fraud symposium. Um, some things that were completed, some are regular duties and some are additional things to try and help get us back up and running. Um, the weekly warrants, bi-weekly payroll, revenue is being posted. Um, we're still continuing to handle a lot of ongoing requests regarding benefits and payroll. With the transitions in your office slash the TA's office, we've had a lot of onboarding requests that have been coming through our office. That we're trying to help with to the best of our ability. Direct pay benefit billing. Um, I know questions were asked about fiscal year twenty-five and while there are things being reconciled, it doesn't mean fiscal year twenty-five as a whole is done. Um, the receivables are reconciled, the balance sheet, which was out of balance, has been put back in balance. Cash was reconciled. The fiscal year twenty-five local cultural council reporting was completed. Um, there are still things to do. There's still things that I think I'm gonna find that haven't been done, that need to be done. I know I haven't seen where encumbrances were done yet, which makes me a little nervous. Um, we did ensure all town meeting articles are in and accounted for, so that's a plus. Um, and then we reviewed and responded to various inquiries from departments, boards, committees. Um, I did go ahead and post the quarterly revenue and the quarterly BVAs on the website today. Again, the BVAs are not gonna be complete and look quote-unquote normal for what you guys are used to seeing until twenty-five is rolled over. Because it's not as big of a deal for general fund or enterprises, but for the other funds, until you roll over last year's balance. It's gonna look like there's no money allocated and they're all gonna be negative. That's just a matter of rolling the fiscal year. It will get better, but it's gonna look wonky for at least a little bit longer. That's about all I have. Unless there's any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
What do you know?
Do.
All right, so same quarter every time, property taxes quarterly soar, bill went out. Um, several excise commitments and demands were issued. We had sixteen minutes of lean certificates prepared this quarter. Um, in August, Danielle, I attended the yearly treasure school. This is the school required for certification. You must attend a minimum of three years before you're able to test. Danielle was actually able to test this year and she just found out a week or so ago that she has passed. And now I have another certified collector. So another couple of years and hopefully she can go for the treasure side and then she can take my job. Um, reminder notices were sent to all parcels with past due property for taxes for FY twenty-five. We started working on leaning any of the remaining unpaid properties. There's approximately ninety properties still past due at the end of September. We're taking it real slow this year because this is all the new legislation. So I really don't wanna be a guinea pig and do this wrong. Um, I don't wanna have to retake everything over again, so we're kinda seeing how other towns are doing it and trying to go by their examples. And make sure we do this right the first time and not get in a bind with this stuff. Um, it's a learning process for all mass cities and towns, so we're all going through it. I'm going to a meeting tomorrow. Hopefully I can ask some more questions and see where people are at and how they're moving forward with this and get through it. And get those properties lean, cause I don't want them to sit there and I wanna get the town protected from that. So we'll work on that and keep at it. Um, collections for the quarter are below, again, they're approximate because everything isn't tied in yet and, but they're there below. Anybody have any questions? What is it typically the same? Every go around, so.
Any questions for sure?
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep, thanks. Mistake anything?
Would be development services. I don't believe there's anyone here because. What is all this? They will help.
Yeah, I believe they submitted a report, Mr. Chair.
They did send a written report.
So, um, I thi- I think if the board familiarizes themselves with that, I think we'll be pretty caught up for, uh, this quarter. Um, yeah, she was, uh, she, she hasn't been feeling well, so, um, we can always have her in on another agenda, um, to go over it. But, um, I think we got a good report here for you.
We do have the report.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any questions, we could email them.
If you have any questions, feel free to direct them towards me and I'll get you the answers. Yeah.
Ryan. It is, uh, pretty. Pretty much the norm stuff. So. Next would be community services.
So I think that was the one I was referring to in the report. I apologize. Um, I believe that's the one you have in your court, community services. It's this, uh, well, the colorful headed. Yeah, so she's not feeling well and she's not here.
Yeah, Lori Weeden is out.
Yeah, she's out. I know why she's out, yeah.
But some of the people from some of the community services are here.
Oh.
They usually give their own sections.
Hello, everyone.
Um.
Mr. Ryan, nice to meet you. I'm Ryan.
Easy to remember.
To say that. Um, I am the manager of the senior center. Um, we had a pretty busy first quarter at the senior center. We continue to get more and more busy as our population grows. Um, the total amount of sign-ins that we had over the course of the three months was one thousand five hundred and ninety-two. Um, that's about a hundred and sixty people. Um, not necessarily every single week, but consistently. Um, we did a hundred and thirty-two services. Services include shine appointments, um, appointments with our outreach coordinator. Um, about SNAP, about, uh, fuel assistance, the whole nine. Um, we gave a total of three hundred and one rides through MART. And had a total of three hundred and ninety volunteer hours used over the last three months. Um, and we had lots of amazing programs. We gave six free meals. We had two COA meetings. Um, we had lots of entertainment from, um, the surround sound chorus, Ryanhood music. We had an amazing production of Bon Appetit Julia, which was about Julia Childs and was really fun. A Neil Diamond tribute, which was a crowd favorite, as you can imagine. Um, I don't know if you saw our Facebook post, but lots of ladies getting serenaded by a guy in a teal sequins top. Um, and we also took a trip to the Haywood Wakefield Commons Anniversary Dance. Um, we had a fraud prevention talk. We had, um, different craft classes like basket weaving and paper quilling. Um, we held our tenth anniversary celebration, which was very well attended. I think we had like a hundred people there, um, and a health fair. All of this on top of our weekly regularly scheduled activities, which include chair yoga, creative stitches, bingo, pitch, cribbage, mahjong and, uh, dropping coffee. And then we also have, um, bi-weekly and monthly scheduled programs like a blood crush pressure clinic, our veterans breakfast, a parent support group. Which is a support group for, uh, seniors who, who have adult disabled children. Um, we have social media discussion, book clubs, friends groups, market basket trips and art classes. Just a couple of things, not a big deal. Any questions?
Thank you, Ryan.
Why am I so much true?
Yes.
Um, so how much, if, do you, are you getting any, I'll, I'll say spill over from any of the other communities like Washington or, or some of the others? And if so, do you know how much other communities are using couples and COA? I mean, you guys are doing awesome things, but, um, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I know we do get a little bit of that. We're gonna see a little bit of that coming through in the next quarter or two, because we're gonna be offering. Gail's gonna be doing two shine days a week, so we're getting some people from Gartner that are coming in for that. Um, but it's, it's not a lot.
Lots of people come from, from other towns to do pitch. They make the rounds.
They make the rounds. There's the bingo hoppers. And just go to bingo at every senior center in the area. Um, but as far as the meals and the entertainment, I would say the majority is Templeton residents. I can.
Yes, if you, uh, I have, once in a while I attend a COA meeting and you hear that, that there are seniors from all the communities and they pretty much, they go this one, they go, they're like. Around Robin type of thing.
Right.
So there's a lot of the senior centers that are used by people from other towns, but they go visit. They have a cool event that everybody goes through with that one, then they go over to this one and that, and it just goes around. So I, I believe it all equals out.
It is. That's my favorite place in town. The senior center is my favorite place. It's so, like, you just go in and everybody's like so happy and, yeah. Cause I mean, they're, they're playing some of those bingos, you know?
We have a great time. That's for sure. I, I don't, I, I laugh a lot.
Yeah.
So, and the Templeton Senior Center is the only one that you can get all this help and services from just one building.
Yeah.
In other towns, you have to go from this building for this and to C I C for that. That, and Templeton's the only one where you can get help with your heating, your housing, your insurance, you know? So we are one stop shop.
What she said.
Thanks.
She does an excellent job.
That's great. Yeah, it's nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan. All right.
All right. So quarter one, um, being in Scout Hall is still a bit of a restriction. So as soon as we can get in there would be great. I know, I think, uh, Bob Sulzak talked to Mr. Ryan about this as well. So if we can get a bid out, a fit package out, that would be wonderful. The digital, excuse me.
Sorry.
The digital equity grant, uh, contract preparation was completed in a painstaking way, but, uh, we're ready to start. I've already put in three hours of planning for that, so we'll, we'll be logging all of that. Our agreement with Wachusett Business Incubator in Gardner is ready. I think we're gonna go to their board first and then bring it to you. Uh, hopefully soon. And we've been researching the possibility of public wifi at the parks and commons and providing that. I may include that in the capital plan if it's, uh, collectively over ten thousand dollars or, or that in one place. Um, I don't know if we'll have all the data ready for that. I can't make you any promises on, on being able to do that. But we're researching it and, um, that actually came up with an idea for inclusion in a larger regional grant that got pulled back. So we're just going to go ahead and try to see what it is. The state values each one at fifty thousand dollars, but we can do it for a lot less. We know that. I think we ran straight into the Massachusetts consultant economy on, on the grant stuff. It shouldn't cost that much to provide wifi at a park. And, um, I've been preparing the capital plan for the cable department for the five-year plan that capital improvements would like. And, uh, as you know, the business plan for TCTV TV was presented at your August twenty-seventh Select Board Meeting. So if we can talk about funding for that at some time, that would be wonderful. I've been dealing with vendor issues. As you know, um, in August, we had trouble with Zoom streaming and so did the school. And, uh, the school finally got an answer after the fact when it miraculously fixed itself, as it did a couple of Augusts ago. Right before school starts and Zoom makes its bones in the education market, so you can kind of imagine what happens. And, uh, the school wasn't very happy with, uh, the response either. They said it had something to do with, forget the term. But anyways, the streams didn't go where they were supposed to go and I think it's another problem anyways. I got to talk to Comcast for two hours the other day and I bet you didn't. Had to talk to a whole bunch of people, someone in another country, I believe. And we had to cancel the, uh, internet service at Scout Hall because they wanted us to keep paying for it. So when we get back in there, we're going to have to make an appointment with Comcast to get a new account for that as well. Um, and our stock video music service, uh, shook us down for thousands of dollars, so they're gone and we're gonna. We can get most of that stuff for free, royalty-free and legally, um, elsewhere as well. So that's actually, I think, gonna turn out to be a good thing. For productions, I won't go through them all. We did over forty videos in the quarter. We have a little bit more help in the summer for that. And, uh, ten take-a-hike videos that are gonna be rolled out. It's still a great time to hike, Templeton. So, uh, those are coming out soon and I wanna highlight the craft fair and play outside day, uh, videos that we did. There's, I think, three concerts on the common and the inside the senior center and their anniversary celebration were popular as well. We did sponsor, a sponsored production for Montechusa TV. And for metrics and analytics, I'd just say Facebook and YouTube on TCTV are a little bit down. It's common in late summer. And you guys haven't been as controversial lately, so. You're affecting our numbers here. Um, uh, but the top posts in the videos tend to include select board recaps, TCTV news. And other newsy items. The Montechusa TV website views are growing. Um, Alex is doing a great job getting that up. It's about three thousand, uh, visits a month now. And he's doing a wonderful job with, uh, the Facebook page. And we do a lot of Facebook posts with multiple photos that people like. And we're making a lot of friends out there in the region. As I said before, TCTV cannot survive on its own in Templeton. That's why we have a regional website to take money from other towns. And I would just say that, um, you know, we have, uh, we're also been doubling the subscriptions for the Montechusa dot TV, uh, monthly newsletter. So please go on the site and feel free to sign up for the newsletter. You'll get a monthly newsletter. It'll have a few events. And that is to get. And that is to get people to keep coming back to the site, which is very important to us. So you can support us greatly by doing that. And that is my report.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave. My pleasure.
That is all the retail material we have. The community services. So we'll move on to the next item, which is item F, which will be to update our select board operating policy. That F for G. It's G, 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 excuse me. This concerns the dog hearing and having a dog hearing scheduled at a single item agenda special meeting. I watched the uh, dog hearing that was uh, they got continued from the two meetings uh, twenty twenty-three. And Mr. Tope was on the board then. And at the September conclusion of it, there was a a general discussion of, you know, the board kind of commented on that you should do that as a standalone because as a dog hearing that we did uh, this year, uh, you have a lot of things on a meeting and it gets emotional. And if you have a lot of people here to speak for against everything, it can get late and drag on. So at our last meeting, uh, I asked the board, you know, we discussed it, the feelings of it, and there was a consensus to in fact do this. So we have met the requirement of our select board operating procedures policy uh, to discuss it at at least one prior meeting before we vote. Excuse me, to amend our policy. So we would uh, this would be on, it's on uh, page fourteen in the policy where it has uh, the meetings of the select board. It has our regular business meetings and then it has the special meeting and to add to that paragraph that uh, and we don't have, they don't come up that often, dog hearings. The one this summer, I I think my, all the time on the board, even two thousand eleven. And so I think that's the second one that I'm taking part in all that time. And it's been two in two years, which seems like a lot, but uh, if you go back uh, from nineteen to twenty-three was the first one and then this year. So generally, there's there's probably not too many, but when you do have one, you know, one, one agenda meeting, do the dog hearing and and that's it. Emotions get high and it takes a while for us to, you know, talk about cause most of the time people don't want to do what really needs to be done. So and as this had been discussed and uh, and talked about, I would uh, any other input from the board members before I honestly, just simply amend our policy for whenever there's a dog hearing, it'll be a a special meeting called.
I'd like to just accept the motion that the select board hold off for their dog hearings as a separate meeting, separate for the select board regular scheduled monthly meetings and to be added to our select board policy assess.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Tope?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Vassal?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next item is the Verizon consent letter. This concerns uh, an existing, long time existing cell phone tower up on Johnston Ave on Lata Hill. There is cover letter that of what they uh, wish to do. They're not they're not building a new tower. They're just uh, over the years, they have uh, upgraded uh, as technology changes. There is plan of all the, you know, the detail in what they want to do.
Mr. Chair, by May?
Yes.
Um, so I spoke with um, uh, someone from Crown Castle, uh, can't find his name at the moment. It was uh, Richard Winter. Um, and so essentially you have a um, lease in this area um, where this uh, tower is that Crown Castle owns. Uh, it's on town property and so you have a long-term lease with them. And so anytime that uh, they of Verizon need to make uh, any updates that rise above uh, just general maintenance, they have to send you a request letter. So it's pretty um, standard. Uh, they're just replacing, you know, what's called a microwave and uh, some other, some other pieces of uh, uh, equipment, not the type of microwave you use to heat up your food, but a microwave that sends signals across the town. And so they're just up Verizon's upgrading some service and um, it actually might improve service in the area. So um, but but because of the lease agreement, they do require that the the town sign off on it.
Like I said, it's the tower's been up there for many, many years.
Long time, yep.
Any more questions for the for the board?
Yep, just one.
I recall years back and before the new public safety radio system was installed, we had some challenges with communications. And it occurred right after one of the changes that was done on these that in accordance with the agreement. FCC rules part ninety-five requires anytime you make a change, if something goes awry, it goes back to its existing configuration. I know this as a licensed ham radio amateur operator. So that would be only only one concern that I would have that we keep an eye. And I do believe we relocated the public safety antenna to the top of the pole for better coverage. We just need to make sure they don't move that.
Yeah, because it's up there along the
Yep.
highest point. It used to be a ski.
Yep.
Ski station.
So my understanding is that they are just upgrading an antenna, a microwave and uh, replacing some cables.
Understood. That in the past, when they did this, it impacted our public safety communications though. So that's one of the rollbacks the FCC throws on you. If you make a change, gotta put it back the way it was and figure out what you did wrong.
But got it.
So just so they know, we're paying attention.
Sure.
But thank you for that.
Yes. So the board can authorize the chair or myself to sign it, however the board sees fit.
At this time, I would accept the motion to accept the Verizon consent letter regarding modifications. Removed?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Tope?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Vassal? And I vote yes. Next item is something I put on there. Nevertheless, when we did not uh, have anyone in our office, uh, two board members, myself and and this Graves, I know for sure have have access to the town website, uh, to post up, to make changes. I've been told that people either have access or uh, that even helping etc., etc. My thing is that now that we have someone in our office and we were there's been a position posted, working on getting uh, a second uh, administrative or executive assistant in there to help out the TA. That board members no longer really need access to the website. I second, I don't know how many people other than those who actually need to post something to it. And one of my things is if you, I can go on the website if I see something I don't like. Hey, I'm gonna change this with no input from anyone. Uh, I'm gonna modify this. Uh, I'm gonna add this. It's I think it's uh, as the old saying goes, too many cooks in the kitchen spoil the food. So uh, I would like to uh, I would like to change that and uh, have uh, the town administrator of, you know, works for us to uh, have say uh, in who has access to the website and for what purposes. There were some department heads and things that post uh, meetings and and things like that, but for the sake of continuity, uh, and i- if the board wants to to change something on the website, uh, I know we have talked about multiple times uh, eliminating town administrator as a department. And with that under uh, the select board, you know, with the town administrator, executive assistants that have no uh, department, town administrator. There are towns out there that that don't have a department called town administrator and there are others that do. It's uh, I would say that's a a board preference type of thing, but uh, things like that, you know, should be done by all of the board and instruct our staff, hey, we'd like to make this change on the website. Make that happen. Uh, it doesn't, this wouldn't take away, all this would take away is the access to the website, which uh, uh, again, it it's a continuity thing and to ensure that, you know, we just don't go up there and start moving stuff around and adding stuff and taking stuff away.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I would like to just to point out a few things that you may not be aware of. Each page individually is run by the individual departments as well as individual boards and um, committees and chairs. They take care of their own. Um, when the um, upgrade came up at about seven thirty on September sixteenth, um, I was in the building and at the time, the town treasurer could not get to her page and post her things. Everybody couldn't post, so they were, what happened was the access that they normally had, um, it sets back to um, to the new site and went back. So they were giving back their access that they were already given by through our office and um, they're all in it. Um, this um, article, um, this uh, thing on the agenda talks about employees. The problem is we also have some that are not, I mean, they were their employees, they're not paid or they got stipends through different boards and committees and commissions um, to um, to to keep them out of that. Um, we'd make more work in our office or we would have to pay somebody um, extra to take care of theirs. Some of those boards have last minute changes, like um, like the SOAR commission, um, they're in it. Um, they have their ra- their rates and stuff. Um, and Amber just talked about how she just went up online and she put up some of her stuff on her page. So each department has their own page. They control it. There's a hub in the mainframe in the beginning where um, the town administrator in the office takes care of that as well as the select board and the town administrator page and all the extra amenities to it. Um, but each board in each um, department takes care of their own pages. The light department is a link to theirs. The school is a link to theirs, so there's nothing there. But um, the DPW, the highway, um, so each one of those departments were giving back their credentials and they each went into the to the transfer over and checked to see if anything was missing. Um, and I believe that most of the stuff has been recovered. There were a few things that we lost, unfortunately. Um, we still have a few more days left um, in the equation. Um, also in the um, the program is uh, the also the um, the company uh, Civic, their employees are also also into the system as well. So this is a broad um, thing. I personally do not want to be in the system. I just went into the system because we had no employee just to give all the departments their credentials to make sure that we're not losing any of our material for the for the residents. But I have already talked to Mr. Um, Ryan from day one and told him that I was in it and let me know when he needs me to be out of it, if he needed any assistance because I had been talking to civics and understanding the programs and the modifications um, where we were landed uh, with the system. Um, you know, I just didn't want us because our office lost um, an employee that morning before and I didn't want us to lose our um, our data and our material and we had no one else to take care of it. So um, I made sure everybody had everything they needed. They reached out if they if they couldn't change something and I changed it for them. Um, they each have their own, like i- in the system, it says like um, uh, the department uh, uh, public services and it says that they control these, only these particular pages and that's it. And then there'll be the department of um, like the uh, the police, um, they have their page and they're take care of their page and they had their credentials put back in. Um, I believe Mr. Baker is the one in that one, but um, and that was because that's what Chief Bennett said, that that's who goes in it. Cause I also contacted each department, had to make sure the right individuals are going. But um, that's, you know, I I told Mr. Ryan, um, oh, I don't remember the last day, it was Thursday or just recent, uh, and from twice, I've I've said that I I do not want to be in it and I mean, I don't think we should be because they can just, our staff can just do it for us. But and he didn't have any staff and um, I'm still, I mean, we still have a few more days and I'm still looking at what it is that we have from the original site to the old site to make sure that we have everything, that we didn't lose it. Like um, uh, Gail had mentioned that something might be missing, so I I I don't know. Some of those odd pages, Holly, oh, the other individuals that worked here did work earlier than they, we were told and they were in the system and they were helping civics transfer a few things, but they didn't make all the initials. Um, um, so some of the stuff were choices that they had made that I could not undo for the town. Um, unfortunately, so we lost a few things, um, but we intact most of everything I can see in there. So um, and I had to make sure that we didn't have a job of our behind, uh, uh, job listing page anymore. We had lost it. So I completely brought it back and redid it and put it up so that we can now have, we have the um, the different uh, the executive uh, add that, yeah, I'm the one who put all that page together so that when you went into it and recovered some of the stuff that was missing on that too. So.
That is, and and that is why I I brought this forward. When the situations get like they were, then you do what needs to be done. But now that we have someone here who uh, has been talking to Andre a lot.
They're probably very sick of me, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, to find stuff, to get stuff lined up and I would just like to get us out of it and
Well, that's easy.
Have the town administrator, have the hand, town administrator handle that work. It's part of what we pay him to do and.
I just, I just wanted to say that this vote is broad and we would kick out um, like advisory, the clerk advisory who has been updating that pay, we would kick. that pay, we would kick out individuals and then who would we take care of those pages? Would we pay somebody? It's just a broad thing and I think if it's just a comfortability that like he can just take us out of the system, it's not really that difficult.
Also, all right, so let me, let's clarify, so there's no motion that's been made, so it's, this is a broad, this is a broad conversation. It's the prerogative of the board who they want to have access to the website. Based on what I'm hearing, you know, I can vouch that we have enough staff to cover department pages and board pages. A lot of the smaller boards don't have a ton of updates, so between myself and other employees here, I'm sure we can handle everything and of course, as was mentioned, the municipal light plant and the school have their own websites, I think maybe the PD might have their own website, I forget. But we, either way, we have enough staff in the in the departments to handle the website if the board wants basically just staff to handle the website going forward. If you want exceptions, you could vote on, you know, staff plus exceptions. So it's it's the prerogative of the board, how you want the website run and now I'm happy to I'm happy to run with it, whichever direction you'd like.
I just would just like to say that some of our boards and committees, they take care of their own pages and they like the the ability to change it as they wish. And I just don't think it's necessary to have it and I don't, where would this, where would this would this go into like some, in a select board policy? It doesn't really say where this would be, you know, for longevity. If this is a rule that we decide to go with. And then we have to say an employee, you know, is it a stipend employee, is it, you know, is it hourly rate employee? Even stipend employees are based on hourly rate employees and how they put into the system.
So if the if the board, if the board wishes that that the employees take care of the website, there's no extra money to be paid. Most of us manage multiple websites, I mean, pages. It's not a lot of work and it's it's loosely related to all of our job descriptions. We all know we have to interact with the website and different things, so. But if the board would like some, if the board is comfortable with other boards and commissions managing their own website, if you have savvy people who are used to it, that's fine as well. So we're here to implement this as as you wish.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah. My only thought on this is that I would like a list of who does have access, who does have the ability to change the pages. Whether we go with staff or, you know, board members to myself personally, I'm open to either one, but I definitely think it should be a fixed group with the ability to access the web page. I don't think it should be just anybody in a department or board or you know, it needs to be more.
It is. It's the executors, the like Michelle at DPW, she's in it, she we have the treasurer, the collector, Danielle and Cheryl, they're in it to take care of their page. They were the first ones when it went down and the new one came up that they couldn't get into it and it was an issue. We counted.
We have a, do we have a list?
Yes, there's a list in the system, we can print out, we can get those.
I can have Civic Plus generate a list if I can't generate it myself. I do remember a while ago where some of that information is, but Civic Plus might be able to print out a neater list for me to provide you.
I would kind of suggest that that list should be under the town administrator's control.
Yep, and that's where you're usually in the select board office and then all the people that were given the access were the same ones. They were in the original, there was not anybody extra, as far as I know. With all the department heads and then the advisory. There's nobody, advisory is Jacqueline, she's the clerk and she's been posting for advisory and cleaning up to make sure they had everything. I guess they had a few items that were missing and but they realized that they didn't need a couple of them. But the other ones they got, they had their, the files that they needed to be put up, so those were corrected for them.
So that is what the intent is to have the town administrator basically oversee this and and employees, remember, you serve on a board or committee for conflict of interest and so forth, you are the town employee. You consider that. It's just to
Like I said, I only went into it to make sure everybody in there, the boards and everything, and we didn't lose anything because it was so much stuff when the employee left and there was nobody left. We had no town administrator, we had nobody in the office. All the credentials had to be given to everybody and the old site is sitting there and you have to make sure you're not losing the data. I told Mr. Ryan on several occasions about it right from the get-go, the first time I even entered the room with him and told him that let me know and I'll get out of it as soon as possible. It's not my intention as a select board member to be in that website and it never has been. It was just something that had to do at the time and make sure that the town's vested interests were taken care of.
Here, we got an audience question.
Good thanks. First, with the new site, you should probably, my suggestion is you pull, you pull all access back and then you look at it on a case-by-case basis as far as what you want to do for who has access. Second, sitting on advisory, the clerk on advisory is only doing it because the the person from the select board's office that was supposed to be taking minutes and everything else for whatever reason stopped and so somebody had to step up. So I, I think it needs to be a little closer contained.
Thank you.
Just another thing with the website, there was a part on the front end where we have the calendar that goes to my town government and TCTV needed access and bring that calendar up on the front end of it so that they could have, so people would know when the meetings were and stuff. So those were the kind of changes that were made visually that you see and it happened. I got some help with that. I'm not that brilliant.
Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
Big help.
Yeah.
Would the board like me to get a list of people with access and do you want to discuss this more at the next board meeting? You want to see who has access and maybe I can get some background of of what they use their access for?
I would make a motion to have the town administrator obtain and maintain a list of who has access to the town website and to remove all others at his convenience. So they would find out everyone who has access to the website now. He would make, create that list, maintain it and using his judgment and powering it down because I do agree with Mr. May that it should be tightened up and it should definitely be a set number. Because I think there's
I just like, I just wanted to say one more time that the original, the, it's always been like that. That every department, they usually, the department heads usually have their executives or their administrative assistants that take care of it and then the boards. Some of the boards like Development Services, Jessica Case is in it, she takes care of most of those boards like CPC and then you have Lori who takes care of some of those. But there's a few little ones, like I think Cultural Council takes care of their own page. I believe Parks and Rec takes care of their own page. And I'm trying to think who else takes care of their own page. There's not that many. Advisory, because they had nobody in the office and it had to be looked at, so Noel said it was best that the clerk take care of that. She's doing the minutes and stuff and she was fixing some of their data issues. But the SOAR department, it's, I think, what's her name, Carol? Is there a Carol? No. Yes, and she, yeah, it's their executive person that that did it. The Police Department, Chief Bennett, he gave his individual person that he had wanted it and said it was always in it for his stuff because he has important stuff that he does and then you had trying to think, the fire, I think it's fire, I think. I'm not sure what he said. But that's, it's just the basics, it's the the tiers. It's not super law, it's just that you have a capital where you have a split employee, one that's under that does with their personal email because they're not doing it in their role of their job, but they're a job employee, so they use two different emails when they're in there because of it's two different entities in their life. But other than that, I think it's straightforward what we always have. But yeah. And they did a good job. I mean, they only have limited access only to their pages. Especially with the SOAR rates. That was like a lot. She had to make sure everything was there, right? Because that's scary if it's not. If you get fees different or wrong and people can point to it and say there's an issue with it.
All right, so I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
That a motion and a second made. Any discussion on the motion?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So does the mo, is the motion asking me to create a list, which I will do in in an event the board wants to view and I will view, but then it's also allowing me discretion on deciding who has access to the website in the future? Okay, thank you.
Just for
Because it's, it's down and out in the wild, wild west there for a while in the website and it's
You know, that's fine, I just wanted to understand the board's intent.
Oh, that probably was when one of you was posting the annual, the warrant. Putting it up, the red and then putting it back down and figuring out how to put it in the other side.
So any further discussion?
So can I just make a point of order? It sounded like you were asking for a motion, it sounded like Ms. Bassel technically approved and then seconded by someone else. Mr. May, okay.
Further discussion on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Thel?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes, sir.
I vote yes. Next item on the agenda is the town administrator about a workshop retreat and this had been discussed by the board when we, back in August twenty seventh, when you set our goals and basically we said we wanted to scrap that and, you know, it looks down to manageable goals and how to approach that. And town administrator has thought, idea on how to do that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, through you. So I do remember that meeting and I know that the town is, I mean, that the board is anxious to set goals, which is a great idea. I also know that this town really values education as we've seen with the many programs that a current crop of employees are going to, as we heard tonight. And that this board has mentioned in the past how continuing education and professional development is very important. So we definitely agree on that and and so, and then the other side of it, there's an opportunity. We have three new board members and I'm new to the town myself. And so a lot of towns tend to do what I'm proposing today and there are a handful of facilitators that exist too. And and several of them are currently involved with the Massachusetts Managers Association and they've been doing this for a long, long time. You have a memorandum in your packet that kind of spells out what I'm gonna just sort of review here, but essentially we would set a date and all of us would meet with this facilitator. And the purpose would be, as it says in the memorandum, many fold. It would be a learning opportunity for new members, but not just new members, members that have been on the board for a while or have been on other boards. You will get a lot out of this as well. I've been to managers association meetings where they've gone over the benefits of of this type of program. Boards that are very productive get a lot out of this. Boards that are, we'll say, less than productive also get a lot out of this because this is very sort of well-rounded kind of retreat that we can go on. So it'll be educational in a sense that it'll provide you with best practices on how to not only work well with each other, work well with me, but also how to run meetings well, efficiently, how to work with members of the public, citizen speak time. Another big factor in kind of doing something like this is that they will walk us through on setting goals for this year and in future years if we want. So we can also use this as an opportunity to set goals together and to learn about best practices on setting goals as well. In addition, so they will help us through long and short-term goal planning. And the facilitator that I've sort of outlined that I've sort of identified, he's been around the manager association for a long time. His name is Jeff Nutting. I was reading his resume and I don't know, it's like thirty something years of town administrative experience, but also he has served on select boards and sewer commissions as well. So he's a really accomplished individual and he's been doing these sort of seminars, I guess, since nineteen eighty-eight? Is that what I put in there? Yeah, nineteen eighty-eight. So, you know, I think this would be a really valuable experience. I think this is the absolute opportune time to do it. It's perfect. I'm new, new members of the board, a couple members of the board have been on a while, but I'm positive would get a would take away a lot from this. Some boards do this more than once because it's very valuable. But I would guarantee you that this board and myself would get a lot out of it if we decided to go down this route and, like I said, this also ties into current work that you're doing and they will help us set goals for the present and for the near future as well. So I think this would be a really value-adding exercise to go through and and I hope that the board agrees and would like to move forward with this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may? Just a question regarding this topic.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that, you know, we'd be going through, you know, talking about our goals and so forth. Will we be using, let's say, our real-time goals in this to actually set them during this meeting? Or to put them in place or to discuss them? Or will this be all hypothetical?
So no votes will be taken at this meeting, it'll be more like a workshop. But we can align everything up, agree to, informally agree to whatever we want and what we think's, you know, gonna be great for us in the near future and then we can take this back to a formal board meeting for a vote, if that's how you want to do it.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question, thank you.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Is a fee involved? Where is the money coming out of what account?
Yeah, sure. So I believe there to be money in the select board budget, but I'm confident that we could find nine hundred dollars. We've been saving money by not having anyone in the admin position for a while and they're not gonna start for a while anyway and we haven't been spending much in the way of expenses as well, so I'm pretty sure we could fit this right into our budget. You also probably have some money possibly in a consulting line, but I just, that's just coming to me now. But I'm, it's nine hundred dollars, it's, so it's under a thousand, I'm confident we could find the money. For the value that we're gonna get in this multi-hour sort of training from this very experienced former town administrator, I think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck. There are people who do this type of work and will charge several thousand dollars for it and he doesn't charge a lot because he likes it. He's he's still involved in the manager association even though he's retired. So he's really kind of a public servant at heart, so he doesn't charge a lot for his time. And prior to the meeting too, he's gonna send out, he would send out a survey for us to, all of us to fill out with different questions that are gonna help him. So before we even meet, he's gonna have, you know, more of a lay of the land, so we really hit the ground running when we actually meet for the workshop.
Again, Mr. Chair, would this be a weekday or a weekend?
If the board would, if the board is interested in doing this, I would then coordinate your schedule. If the board would, uh, if the board is interested in doing this, uh, I would then coordinate your schedules thereafter. And so it could be whatever works for the board. He mentioned, because he's retired, that he has maximum flexibility.
At this time, I would make a motion to allow the town administrator to schedule with the select board the workshop retreat as discussed.
So moved.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? And I vote yes.
Great, I will schedule that and, um, I will, I will work with the board on scheduling that. Thank you.
The next item is again town administrator. They discussed.
Sorry, I'm all over this, Jenny, you're listening to me talk all night, gee, I'm so sorry. Um, so, uh, one of the many things that, uh, you discover, when, I mean, you discover a lot of things when you come into a town and, um, one of the first things, I think, when I met with you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, you handed me a, uh, a couple of credit cards, some of them had previous employees' names on it, so we, um, cut them off, they, we took their name off the card. And then the next question was, well, who's, whose name's gonna go on the next card? And so, um, this might be a, a bit of a change, but in, in, um, researching how, i- in theory it would be my name, researching how to get my name on it, um, I found out that the application process requires my social security number and my home address. Um, so I'm hearing groans already from some, some people and, uh, they can understand the problem with that. Um, you know, uh, I, I, I think most people would feel uncomfortable, uh, I mean, I guess the previous people who worked here weren't, but, um, if something happened to the card, I'd be afraid that it would be my name and my personal credit on the line. So it doesn't seem like in this type of situation, you know, when I acted as a, as town administrator for you in this capacity, um, I'm covered by your, um, insurance policies, um, and, and covered by, uh, you know, your legal defense if, if, you know, acting in, in my official duties, something goes wrong and someone tries to sue us. Um, however, in looking at this, I don't think, you know, the town's insurance policy can protect me from a credit card company that has my personal information. And so that leaves kind of an awkward question, because as, um, actually a speaker sort of pointed out, there's a lot of things that the town has gotten used to charging to the credit card. Um, you know, i- in my, um, previous employee, when I worked for the town of Salisbury, um, we, we looked into that and we came across the same thing and no one wanted their information connected to the card. And so in Salisbury, we never had a card, everything, we, we managed to get all of our vendors to invoice us. Um, even Amazon, as we, as we have here, uh, invoices us, so the, they were super rare things that were, I think there was only one or two things that were on a credit card. We had, for example, we had a part-time, uh, IT consultant and there's, there was like a, a hundred dollar charge for some license that he would charge to his personal card and then get reimbursed for, and that was, I think, the only thing town-wide that I knew of that someone was using a card for. Um, and so, I'm not saying for certain that, um, everything we charge to the credit card, we can get invoiced for. I'm confident that a lot of the stuff anyway, we can get invoiced for. And so what I'm asking the board to approve tonight is to allow me to investigate, um, moving as much up to everything off of the credit card into an invoicing feature. And, um, ideally closing, well, I'd have to look into how that affects, I, I don't know, our type of credit rating if I close a credit card, but making it so that nothing is being charged to the town's credit card going forward, if I can. So I'm just looking for approval to take those actions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, a few things, um, I just wanted to say, um, that, um, when it came to the credit card in the town, I was under the conception that the only reason why we have it is that the, uh, town, um, treasurer collector allows it to happen, because she can stop it anytime based on her role in the finance of the town. The second thing is, um, a few items, um, I'm not sure, it would have to be checked into, and I believe it goes through the, um, the, um, the former, um, town administrator that left, um, back and and that the Red Cross swimming program is paid through, I don't think they take a P, uh, a PO or invoice, but you'd have to check with the, um, so I'm just gonna give you a tip, you have to check if it comes into his, his, um, billing. And then, um, I think you have to check with the, uh, the estate Red Cross swimming.
So part of, part of this process that I'm asking permission for is to look into exactly all of that, so.
Okay.
I already have some bills, um,
That's.
That list a lot of stuff. And so it's, it's gonna be, you know, a little bit of a, a time-consuming process, but we're, I'm gonna have to go one by one and, and, and try and figure out what can, what can be moved up.
Bringing this one up is because it's tied to the actual, um, the, um, the credentials of the actual swimming structures for the town. They have to have that open, you know, for the town to be, we pay due for it. So I just, you know, I, I took a lot of effort and energy to get them to back the credit into these swim classes. Me and, uh, um, the former, uh, selectman, uh, Terry Griffiths, so that, that's, that, I mean, credit card wise, I mean, I mean, it is difficult to find, um, a few here and there, some things you can, I mean, I'm sure Bob has a few things, like, if you, um, buy, uh, use part from somebody, they want you to put a credit card to it to hold the part, that kind of thing, I mean, that's what I've experienced.
So I, I wanna make clear right now that, um, if there are things that we discover still need to be charged to a credit card, now the problem becomes, we have no one, no one on the credit card to use it anymore. So, right now, there were recurring charges on the credit card, so, so different bills that are like monthly. Um, those will continue to go through. But if there are any things that are coming down the line that, you know, let's say a yearly fee or something that people were using, that a department was using to pay with a credit card, that doesn't exist right now, because there's no one, there's no employee whose name is on the card.
Anything to?
Yep. Two quick comments.
Yes.
Um, I don't understand some of the concerns here, and I'm gonna repeat this, I've said it before, I've said it at nauseam. President Reagan's seven most dangerous words, we have always done it that way. Please do not forget that. There is no excuse in today's day and age, the town cannot have a municipal issued card. If, in lieu of that, I understand invoices, we wanna order a part, they wanna hold it. Purchase orders have been around for hundreds of years. They work.
Right.
They still stand, they still do, and again, this will be part of the digging through and investigating. But I do understand the concern, we don't have anybody currently named, that is a problem. Especially with some of these other things.
And I do believe that when, um, so Na- Nancy, uh, Tiros, the assistant town accountant, I do believe when she was calling American Express, she asked them about, you know, having just the town's name, the town of Templeton just on the card. And I believe they said they don't do that, so I don't, I'll look into it again. Um, but it's either, it's, it's either, I don't know, it's either that, so maybe we get, maybe there's a different way to get a town of Templeton card, it's either that or everything has to go to invoicing.
Hey, just corporate accounts exist all over the place, I don't understand how they're saying they can't.
Well, so, when you, when you, so, so I'm thinking back long ago when I worked for the private sector and, um, the one, the one sort of experience I had, and, and this is anecdotal, so, you know, we can't put too much weight on it.
Yeah.
It did have that employee's name on the card, he was a high-up, you know, vice president, whatever, but it was his name on the card. So if that's the same, then, you know, all the power to him, but, um, it, technically, they need your social and your address to.
Yeah, I, I do echo your concerns and your having reservations, putting personal information on the line.
Yeah. I think they want my blood type too, I don't know.
Here we go.
Oh, in the audience.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. There is such a thing as a P card. And I've worked for companies that, that do this. And a P card is a corporate charge card using for smaller operational purposes, like office supplies requiring full monthly payment at the end of the month. While a credit card is a general purpose payment to reduce for larger purposes. And um, they have controls like um, spending by vendor, by category and time, automated enforcement to block non-compliant purchases. And at companies that I've worked with, definitely did purchasing, each purchaser had a P card, but it was in the name of the company.
That's great, thank you, I will look into that.
That is our shine volunteer.
Yep. Thank you, yeah, thank you, go.
So if the board would just allow me to look into that, um, I'd be happy to figure that out.
Any further discussion? At this point, I would entertain a motion. Allow the town administrator to explore the possibility of reducing credit card expenditure to choose or eliminating the town credit card. What are his discretion?
So moved.
A second? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next item, town administrator?
Yes, so in your packets, you have another memo from me, sorry for all the reading, uh, about the assistant town accountant. Um, so we, we've heard today how, you know, Ms. Graves stepped up, for example, um, in helping with the website and, um, we heard during the quarterly, um, about, um, uh, from Amber's, uh, the town accountant's quarterly about them picking up, uh, benefits. So, another person who is with the town, uh, who's stepped up big time recently is, is Nancy Tiros. Um, um, processing and handling, uh, new hire paperwork was, um, not initially, uh, her job, but with the absences in the select board office, someone had to pick up the slack and, um, she has done so. As someone who did this exact work for, for over seven years, um, I can tell you that it can be extremely, for one thing, extremely time-consuming. Um, everything from quarrying to I-nines, to all the different paperwork that we filled out to enroll and, um, town benefits, so health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance. We have short-term disability policies that are optional, and so all these different things. Um, and for a lot of these pieces of paperwork, you also have to bring in, uh, a number of items, so let's say voided check, birth certificate, um, you know, license. Um, and so this paperwork can be time-consuming, it requires her to often schedule with employees. It requires her to often follow up with employees, because, you know, you tell people what to bring in, they forget something, they have to come back, so you're constantly, you're, you're handling this paperwork more than once usually. Um, then it's about learning, so then she has to have some hi- a slightly higher understanding of the municipal benefits than the average employee does. Um, because when people are coming in and, and filling out paperwork, they're gonna ask her, because she's the one in front of them, you know, what does this mean, how much does this cost, what, you know, what, what is it, what does it include? And so it requires her to then, um, map, you know, surpass this learning curve relating to our municipal benefits, our health insurance, um, everything else. In addition to that, she then has to learn all the different web portals that, um, exist to actually enroll people in these benefits. And so once she got up to speed and got all the login credentials, uh, and learned all that stuff, then that's another part of it. Um, and then after she's finally done all that, now she can do her part of it of entering deductions and other pieces of information into our payroll system. So, it is a, uh, bit of a burden, she's done, um, I think, over seven, uh, employees in the, in the last month, including my, my own paperwork. Um, and so I'm requesting just a temporary, um, bump to her pay bi-weekly of fifty dollars, so a hundred dollars a month, until we can find a permanent replacement. Then this dollar amount will, um, cease once we move the paperwork, uh, move this responsibly from her. Um, I just, I believe it's important to, um, recognize when employees, um, are, are not only being team players, but um, especially when they are taking on responsibilities that are not part of their job description and not complaining about it. If she were a union member, you would have had to sit down and negotiate this change before she even touched the paperwork. So I think it's important to recognize, um, and, and as much as possible, treat non-union employees the same way we may treat union employees. Um, generally, I just think it's a fairness thing, she's doing something she wasn't tasked to do, what's not part of her job. Um, and, you know, the dollar amount is pretty de minimis and, um, the town accountant has, um, reviewed her budget and can handle, uh, multiple months of, of this small increase, so, um, I, I hope the board would, will, will approve this for Ms. Tiros. And by the way, she did not ask for this, this is, this is me doing this.
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't see how you can, uh, increase somebody's pay and then, um, take it back. Um, I wouldn't be opposed to like a one-time bonus for the extra work she's putting in, but to, to add it to her paycheck and then, and just say you're gonna take it back, I don't think would be.
Problem with the one-time bonus is that she, she's gonna keep doing this work, um, and she's already done a bunch of it. Um, if, if she, if she didn't make clear to me that she doesn't wanna keep this, I might say, yeah, it's a little awkward, giving and taking away. But she understands that this will only be temporary and she doesn't wanna keep doing the work, so she would be quite okay with, with this. If she did decide to keep it, um, you know, I would have to come back and ask you to allow her to keep it, and I would do that. Um, but right now, the, the plan is for her not to.
There's, also comes a time and everybody that's worked anywhere has done stuff above and beyond when it was necessary. And I don't think that a I don't think that it should be added into her paycheck, again, I'd be, I'd be more towards a, a bonus instead of an additional, uh, dollar amount in her paycheck.
If this was a smaller function, I would, I would, I would, I wouldn't be here asking for this, but as someone who did it um, for seven years, it's, it's, it's a pretty big, um, com- time commitment and time suck, but it's, it's the board's prerogative, whatever, whatever the board feels is, is right or proper, I just, um, I definitely want to just, um, reward people when they are looking out for the best interests of the town and, and not just themselves. She's a team player.
Mr. Chair, by me?
Yes.
Um, just had a, you know, question related to what was being said here, that, um, you know how Lisa was saying she should defer it as a bonus? And we're saying, you know, twenty-five dollars a week, basically, or fifty dollars bi-weekly. Um, that's not an hourly rate, that's not anything, so how's that gonna be put on, is it like a stipend or a bonus or on her check?
Um, I, it's, yeah, I would, I would let the, the town accountant figure that out, I, I would assume it would just be an additional, um, um, I'm blanking on the word, um, additional, it'll be like a line item on her, on her pay stub that would be an extra fifty dollars and ta- taxes, applicable taxes would be withheld from it, obviously, but, yeah, it'd be fifty dollars, um, gross.
Question in the back.
Yes.
Question in the back.
You don't look up very often. Is the intent to eventually hire an HR? You know, part-time or?
Well, um, traditionally, this, um, role has been done, um, through the town administrator's office, uh, and the, I guess historically, the executive assistant slash assistant town administrator was doing this before, but and I may go that route, um, when the new person's hired, it just doesn't make sense for it to go through that, so I just have to see who in town hall might be interested, and if no one, then I probably would have to give it back to the executive assistant.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Nancy, um, has stepped up be, beyond belief over the last year with, um, several different, um, accountants or accountant, um, advisors. Um, and, um, and now recently she's being added to, um, more work assignments. Um, uh, we cannot ask more of an employee. Um, I don't, I think the way you're describing it on, um, that the, um, town administrator is describing it, James is describing it, is kind of like not, it's not an hourly, like, she's not like, she's not gonna get like, you know, I don't know, fifty dollars an hour, she's getting. She's getting an extra twenty-five dollars in her paycheck. So that's like, you know, it's not, it's not hourly. She's getting an extra twenty-five dollars on top of her rate. So, so it's just like, it is just an added piece to her. So her, she'll work her hours, they'll get the base rate, and then this added number will be added to that number. Yeah, I wish that we had a lot more offered to Nancy because she truly deserves it. Because we have been relying her quite a bit to do, to step up to this town and to be, you know. I guess, I mean, all of the employees, I think she's the one it's, since not having a town administrator or having an off, in our office, or having an accountant. So she definitely deserves it. I wish we could give her more. But I don't think it's like a takesy-backsy thing because that would be if she was actually getting an increase in her rate, her hourly rate. This is just a little extra money for helping out. And I know, I, I know her, she, she does not want to do all this HR stuff. It's not something, yeah. It's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot to ask of her. And I mean, she's going to, she's willing to do it. You know, I just hope that we get an executive assistant in the ASAP so that they can actually just take it from her, you know, personally.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the, to her getting that extra pay. But it's just that adding it into the paycheck and how it's going to be differentiated from her hourly rate to, you know, instead of even just set her for an extra check, you know?
It'll be.
Description on it.
Yeah.
But not adding it to her paycheck.
They, so there's different account codes that they put into the payroll system. So, you know, if you're thinking of, let's say, a police officer, it'll say base rate, and then there'll be a rate underneath that. That'll be their overtime rate. And then there'll be a rate underneath that, that'll be the base rate with the education incentive increase. So you, so you can see these codes in Harper's. And the more complicated the, the contract, let's say, the more codes they'll have. It would, I would have to ask town accountant, we're getting a little in the weeds with it. But it would probably be a separate code that, because we get paid biweekly. That would just be a fifty-dollar amount before taxes take it out. It'd be an extra account code. That's probably how she would do it. But I'm not, you know, the, if the board authorized this, we're not going to spend a red cent more than fifty dollars biweekly.
Clarity. And you had, Mr. Chair, you had said that, that you had talked to the town accountant and then they had it in their budget to be able to allow this to happen. Want to clarify that too.
That's all, that's all I have.
Hearing, no further discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve temporary increase in the assistant town accountant's salary of fifty dollars biweekly until a permanent replacement for a new hire paperwork is established.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
I do, I do. I don't like the way that's worded, that's increase in her salary. Should be amended. Just a stipend or an additional fifty dollars biweekly.
Yeah, it sounds like it's, it sounds like it's.
You want to replace salary with the stipend?
Yes, please.
Mr. May, you find that?
I'll accept that again.
Mr. Toth?
Yes, I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Is that it? Still on the amended motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Vassal?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, board. I'm sure this, I'm sure the employee will feel valued from this gesture. So I thank you for that.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, sir.
And the next item?
Again, so sorry. Getting a lot, we're getting a lot done today. So what I've been told was that in, in the planning for FY twenty-six's budget, at one point, there were, there was capital planned and then the capital was dumped so that, you know, free cash could be used elsewhere. As part of that capital, original capital plan that was then scrapped, there was fifteen thousand some odd dollars for bulletproof or Kevlar vests for the police department. When the capital was scrapped, so was that money. However, there's an unfortunate problem with that in that we have a contractual obligation to replace bulletproof vests in the PD when they expire. They have expired as of August. And so currently, right now, we are in violation of our contractual obligations. Obviously, it is also a safety issue. The union is being very patient with it because they know you were without a town administrator for a while. And so they have a grievance that they are holding, that they're holding back at the moment because they're giving, you know, me time to work on this. And so they're, they're being very patient and very friendly, and I respect that. So I need to bring this to your attention so that we can resolve this issue. I would like permission to, to reach out to the advisory commission to get a transfer from their reserve fund to pay for this. If this was a regular capital item, I wouldn't worry about it. But unfortunately, we have a contractual obligation in the police union's contract, which we will talk about tonight. In executive session, I can even point out where it is, but is in the contract. And currently, right now, we are technically in violation. And so I'm hoping that the board will allow me to work with advisory to get a transfer or at least bless a transfer for later this year and have the, have the chief make this purchase now. And then we can right-size the budget toward the end of the fiscal year. The other thing we need to consider also is that even if we purchase the vest tomorrow, there's a six-month lead time on them. And, and the union understands that that's not our fault, but I just want to make that, make the board aware of that. That, like most things these days, the lead time is about six months out. And so that said, I'm just looking for permission to work with the advisory committee and your blessing to get money for this now. Because as I mentioned, they have expired as of August. They have a five-year life on them. They wear down over time with stretching, pulling, movement, sweat. And so they have a five-year, a shelf, a five-year expiration date, which we passed in August. Oh, I'm sorry. And also in your packets, there's, as a quote, looks like this, that the police chief supplied me. So that's the exact number, fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Mr. Chair, through you.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, this is a little unfair to you because you're late to the game and that's not your fault.
Yeah.
In March, when we had our day-long budget hearings, I believe the number presented was in the eleven thousand, one hundred dollar price range. I understand prices do indeed go up. One of the challenges and concerns, the chief was asked directly by this board and the advisory committee in our joint session. Can you live within this budget? The answer we were given is, I can make it work. That was a direct quote. What I'm hearing now, they knew these were expiring. I see a problem in managing his equipment. I see a problem in managing his budget. I just want to go on record saying that because that is concerning to me.
Okay.
And I, I do understand the union has every right to file a grievance. I'm, I'm not arguing that. I'm not arguing we should be providing protective equipment to our personnel. But I see a cascading sequence of problems here. That this is one of these things that's gone on forever and it, it's got to stop. It's just got to stop. And again, it's not your fault. I'm not beating.
No, I know you're not. That's okay. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
To be fair to Chief Bennett, when we spoke about this, you know, I was the one who kind of jumped and said, okay, we need money. I'll go talk to the board. So I, I just don't want to, 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 to make it look like that. I don't know. I just, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I guess I didn't ask him if he could, you know, work it within the budget. Fifteen thousand dollars is, is a lot of an extra expense to work into any budget, even though his is on the larger side as far as the municipal departments go. I'd be surprised if he could make this work because it's a very large chunk of change. And I, and I obviously wasn't there when you had the conversation about his budget. I don't know if he was envisioning, you know, operating budget and then this was going to be in the capital. I don't know if he equated those two at the time. But I would imagine this is a big chunk of change to try and fit into, to his budget and.
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me, Mr. May?
Yeah.
No.
I have a concern. Because as you stated, the vest expired in August. Six months waiting time. That means in February is when we needed to order them. So this would have needed to have gone to the fall town meeting last year, which it didn't. I don't know if went through capital last year.
It did.
It did, okay. But I do know this is a recurring issue. It just kind of surprised me when you said it right off the bat because it doesn't seem like it's been that long since we did this replacement. And that was one of my questions. Is this, for all the vests are expired at this point?
Correct, yeah. So it must have been, it must have been five years ago that you purchased this round of vests.
Just curious because I, I know that we purchased individual vests since then from our vest account because that was thirty-six hundred when we did our last purchase.
So I don't know if you've had any turnover, but sometimes vests cannot be fitted to new officers. A lot of times they can because the officers tend to, you know, stay in good shape. So it sounds weird, but they all tend to be kind of around the same size, but not always. And so the vests are fitted to the officers. That's part of this charge is the vests get purchased, they come in, and then they're fitted to the individual officer. So, and which is necessary because the officers want, need to be able to move in a way that they are comfortable with for safety reasons. So sometimes the vest cannot be transferred to a new officer that comes into town.
And one request that I would make, if we do approve this in any stretch, is that the old vests be dealt with properly through the procurement rather than used as target practice. Because that's been the history and they do have value still, even after the five years. Because that's just a union issue. They're resold and repurchased and I can point websites out where they are. So that would be my one stipulation with any kind of improvement. I do understand they need them and I do understand we have an obligation. But, you know, I also believe they do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I believe they went through capital and I think the intention was they were high, it was one of the higher of the list things. But because of the budget situation and how some of that money was taken and used to make FY twenty-six budget to happen, I think that that was some of the problems that we were looking at, unfortunately.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
That, that is absolutely correct. Most of what capital put forward was zeroed out because we had the eleventh hour scramble to make a budget that was workable when it was presented. Yes, that, that, that did occur. The number of items, this was not the only one.
Yeah.
I was the board's rep to the capital for that last cycle. And trust me, it was painful.
Yes.
I'm speaking as an individual. The fifty thousand dollars that is sitting in the advisory account, I believe, is used for emergencies, unforeseen emergencies. You can correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I am. But to me, this is a lack of planning. This is not an emergency. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For the record, we also know that we have new members on the advisory committee. But we, it is correct that they do stick to the fifty, that money being for an emergency. We couldn't even get, what was it, the COVID or something, something that we, everybody thought was an emergency. They wouldn't even move on that. So this is going to be a stretch, in my opinion. Because it is, yeah, it's a hundred percent need and it has to happen. But is there any other place, town administrator, you think that we could find the funds besides asking advisory?
Well, so two things. First, I could make the argument, and whether advisory agrees with me or not, that this is unforeseen because at one point it was in your capital, so it was seen. Then when capital was dropped, clearly there was some sort of miscommunication about what, what should be brought forward. Because if we had a contractual obligation, then regardless of the budget situation, that money should have been put somewhere. So, you know, and maybe that was because you had turnover with the town administrator's office. There's all kinds of reasons. So you can make that argument. Sorry, Ms. Graves, was you questioned?
I was just saying that it was.
Find the money elsewhere.
Somewhere else that we think we could try to find the money someplace. So I'm just, I'm just saying for the track record and based on the town, the fifty, that amount in the advisory being, being a strict hardcore emergency, I, I just think it's a, it's a, it's a big lift to ask. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just recommending that they need it. And if that's not going to work, then we have to find the funds someplace else to make it happen.
So I, I, I'm confident that, you know, when you were doing your budgeting, you're pretty much budgeted to the penny.
Yeah, we did.
On everything. So in fifteen thousand, you know, if, if we were talking about like some of the things that we've just spoken about today, fifty dollars for someone, nine hundred for a workshop, I'd say, yes, we could find the money. It's over fifteen thousand dollars. So, you know, that's, so I doubt it, I guess is what I'm saying. I'd be surprised if there was somewhere. I mean, you know, you, we could spend the money and then, then sort of try and manage everyone's budgets on this end and try and, you know, short our planned spending by fifteen thousand across multiple departments. Because you do vote your budget as one ten million plus number. But that's, you know, that's going to be tricky. And again, if this, if this was a regular capital item and not a contractual obligation, I wouldn't be worried about it. But there's a grievance that they are holding back, that they're going to win because it's fairly black and white.
Now, you said that Chief Bennett didn't look in his, in his budget for the money is something that he feels looked for. And then, you know, we could come back and re-discuss it and then with a different amount and try to look for.
Sure.
After he checks his budget.
Sure. I mean, I could, I could go back. But again, I, I don't know, you know, if he tries to not spend on vehicle maintenance, but you get a number of cruises go down. You know, he's probably got a few hundred dollars for, you know, office supplies and things of that age. So we can, we could try. I will definitely ask him, for sure.
Two things. One, you're asking the board for authority to go, simply to go to the advisory committee to make the case to use money from the reserve fund, which by state law can be used for any lawful purpose. There are some towns that have bylaws. Arlington has one, reserve fund cannot be used for pay increases. So if you give somebody a raise or anything, you can't go there. We don't have any such bylaw. It is just a reserve fund. It is up to the advisory committee. And I don't want to put this off. So you go talk to the chief and then we're either going to have a special meeting or we're going to wait till the term ends. If we give you the go now to go to the advisory committee, make the case, it's up to them. They can vote yes, they could vote no, if they vote no. And in the meantime, before you go, because I'm not sure when the meeting is, but you can also explore the chief's budget, the police department's budget and, and look otherwise. And we, we are not in a position for our free cash to be certified. I'm not sure exactly, but the town accountant on this, we're, she's got the balance sheet down and stuff, but.
I mean, that would have to be appropriated at a time meeting anyway, so.
Mr. Toth, but, no, but. no, but it, once that is done, that would be a way that we could always
Backfill the budget.
Put money back. And if we would have known this
Yeah.
a few weeks ago, well, before we closed the Fall Town Meeting, we could put an article on to transfer money from the reserve fund to us.
The other thing.
Looking for authority to go. I, I don't see an issue with you going to ask.
The other thing that the board might also consider is that, um, i- i- if, if, you know, if we were to decide to go some other route today, um, and, or advisory, you know, um, thought that this wasn't, that they were going to vote no on this. Um, we're going to have to spend legal funds to, you know, defend ourselves against the grievance. Um, and that could run into the thousands. So, and then, and then it could end up being that we have to pay for it. And so now we're paying for this. We spent legal money and now we're at the end of the year trying to backfill the budget anyway. So I think th- these things just need to be taken into consideration. I know it's not, I, I, I'm, you know, don't, I know I'm the bearer of bad news, uh, uh, but, uh, I just, I want to protect the town from legal expenses, from violating our contractual obligations. And obviously I don't, uh, you know, I don't want to get off on the wrong foot with our union partners either. Because these are, these are our people and our employees. You know, they're not just union people.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to allow the town administrator to go seek approval possibly from the advisory committee for the fifteen, um, the amount that he had given. What is the amount?
Fifteen thousand seven hundred ninety-five.
Yes, um, to return, um, to possibly be transferred from the reserve fund, um, to the, to the police department budget for the purpose of replacing the bulletproof vest for the officers.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? Then I vote yes. And from a long, long time ago, this board was told back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen by the DLS and an accounting, uh, consultant, if we continue to use free cash to run our general fund budget, we are going to continue to have these money issues.
Hmm.
And that's what we did the last two years at the last minute. Those school assessment and a few other things. And if we don't change our ways, we're going to be doing this forever. The motion passes. Town administrator?
Yes, sir. Um, so this one's quick. Um, I spoke with the town council, um, last week. I'm actually familiar with Tom Harrington because I worked with him in Wellesley years ago. Um, so you have a great town council, um, at your disposal. And he just suggested that, um, we, that we clarify, um, officially who has authorization to work with town council.
Right.
Because obviously every time we think about them, they charge us fifteen minutes. So there is, uh, uh, you know, there's, they're worth every penny, but they're expensive. And, um, so my, my recommendation is that, um, um, and just my recommendation, it's up to how the board wants to do it, but, um, that the, uh, that the, that the board authorized, that board members are allowed to speak with town council, myself. The, I always get these confused, so give me a moment. Um, the development services director, because, um, zoning, planning and conservation often have a lot of e- uh, legal issues. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to, uh, her having direct contact as so long as she just keeps me informed. You know, she sees me on emails or lets me know she, you know, had a, had a call with Tom or Ryan, whoever else on their staff. And, uh, I think that was all we were thinking. And everyone else should, um, go through either myself or the board. And that's not because we want to micromanage. It's because we have to manage the budget. And if there are too many, I think you use this analogy before, too many cooks in the kitchen. Um, we lose track of the budget and we burn through it too quickly. Um, so it's a, it's a major piece of the budget that has to be managed properly. And so, um, that's my recommendation to the board.
I would, uh, I would opine a step further. Generally speaking, the board can only act as a board. Again, sort of like the website, we could have five people calling up town council for almost anything without others knowing it. And therefore I, I would opine that, uh, it'd be tighter that we go through you, the town administrator, uh, for any issues sent to the hey, Tom, uh, blah, blah, blah. And you're not thinking in these fifteen minutes, you know, fifty bucks, hundred bucks, boom, and then you get the, you get the invoice and holy,
Yeah.
how did we spend all that?
That's a
Every time you call me and chat, you know?
Yeah.
The the frequent flyer miles are piling up and I, I just think that, uh, it should be tighter.
I would, um, just, um, be aware that, um, whatever we recommend, I'm going to take back to Tom and he is your client. So you can do that, but to tell the board you have to go through the town administrator and then let's say one board member or the chair yourself decides to go to Tom directly. It puts him in an awkward position because he really works for you and, and not me. Um, statutorily. So I would have some sort of flexibility like the chair, town administrator, if you want, um, uh, developmental services director as well, um, something like that. But, um, I appreciate your thought. I just don't want to put, um, Harrington and Heap in an awkward situation.
I necessarily don't want to, I've been being to sound like, and I'm not asking that, you know, we have to get your permission. It's just, hey, I'm contacting town council. Yes. So budget wise, you can peek tabs and remind us, you know, where we are. Because uh, and again, it can be, you know, something comes up and you'll say, oh, I want to check on this for something on the agenda or another meeting or something. And you just call and if there's not a connection, I don't know if we should call up town council and spoke with half hours. So I call them up and talk on something.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, I just spoke to, uh, you know, it's like board member Basil on there. Oh, and, you know, I'm on the phone with ten minutes with them. And it's again, don't want it so the board has to, you know, ask permission, but just, hey, I'm going to contact town council.
Right.
Because of this. Maybe you can say, well, I'll save you a call, Jeff. Uh, it's blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Or, okay.
Yeah, just keep me informed would help me get a general idea when the bill comes in, how many conversations were had. Yeah.
Cool. Mr. Chair, my, my experience was I, I think I believe I asked you because I was, um, I went to the chair to make, you know, to see. Because I had, um, you can see when I sign things, you see, I have to have a special thing written underneath me. And, um, uh, so, uh, yeah, that was a town council. That was that phone call. He checked into stuff because I had called the appointment, the improper people, but I had, they had recommended I get another clarification on that. So, but, um, most of the stuff, I mean, I just think that, that what ends up, I mean, no offense to you, but what ends up that, the, um, the situation was, I, I think the chair should, if we're going to make any kind of motion, the chair should still be in it because I feel like what happens? It's a question about something about you, right? So why would we try to tell, you know, want to tell you that? I'm completely, well, completely with the chair that I said it. I understand you take, you would be tracking the money. But I, I just think taking the chair out of the equation to ask, I mean, not, I'm saying we go to him, but if it was something else, we would be able to have the option to go to the chair if we, you know, to get approval. You know, I would just feel the not to eliminate the chair role in this situation. Okay.
Mr. May?
Mr. Chair? Um, almost ditto on what Candace says. Um, I would, uh, from your scenario that you presented, I would, uh, suggest that we keep the chair, the TA, and, uh, you know, if you feel developmental services, um, you know, utilizes the service, you know, effectively, efficiently and often, uh, then so be it and those be the three because we can go through the chair. Um, and that keeps things uh, a little bit more in line. Um, because I know, um, just as an example, um, when we were doing your contract, um, honestly, I didn't feel comfortable contacting a lawyer. Um, because I hadn't received approval to do that directly. Even though me and Tim were put in that role and we had to contact, you know? Um, but I, I just assumed not be contacting the town council. Um, and, uh, going through the, the chair. I have no problem with that. And, uh, I think that could possibly cut down on our use of the legal services. Which I'm all in favor of.
I just wanted to say one more thing about my experience with this town and legal services. Um, could it be possible that when we do ask question, like we, if a question goes through, like in my experience, um, question, oh, this is past people, but quite, same questions were asked a year after year. And I just, I, my opinion was like, you don't have like a, a book, like you couldn't double check. You don't have to go back to them. Um, we had a lot of wasteful spending with the, um, the town, um, council, um, because there was multiple times that that other individual had asked the same question. So I just want to like maybe, I'm just recommending, this is more of a recommendation, like keep a, like, like a log of, like, if you've already asked this question, maybe you could go back and be able to look at it so we don't have to double dip on the same questions. It's, that would be saving. Um, I don't think that you would do it, James, but I just wanted to say it out loud.
Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize the town administrator, development services and the board members through the chair to utilize town council services and for the town administrator to be informed of town council use so as to properly monitor the legal budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? And I will, yes. And that takes us to old business.
Um.
The, uh, we have a
Did we?
Scow Hall issue?
Uh, it's not on the agenda. It, it, I talked about the, um, um, oh, no, I took that off. Yeah. Because, uh, Bob and I decided that, um, uh, it was just too early to, to jump the gun on that.
So.
Thank you though for asking.
So we are at old business. The Fall Town Meeting, what?
Just so the, the board is aware, uh, I was able to get the, uh, town council's changes back from them prior to this meeting. So you have, what you have in front of you is town council's changes. Um, so we're a little ahead of where we thought we would be. There is a red line version if you want to see, but I, I don't think we'd be questioning what the lawyers say we should do. There is a red line version, if you want to see, but I, I don't think we'd be questioning what the lawyers say we should do.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, will we go through these one by one or are we, are we just gonna read through these individually and then do it as a packet?
Let's show them what, so. So first, first article is, uh, to amend the bylaws for the annual town audit. Uh, this was a part of, uh, a bylaw change that was in front of annual town meeting. This is, uh, a section that got left off. And the composer of the article went down on the floor and said, the article did not, was not complete and was not what the previous board had voted on to present the town meeting. So it was stated on town meeting floor that this section would be placed on fall town slash special town meeting in November. And what it does, uh, if it really, it removes the printing of the audit in the annual town report. When this bylaw was put in place, uh, an independent annual financial audit was not a matter of mass general law. That didn't come into effect until the municipal mobilization act two thousand sixteen and most of which went into effect of, of seventeen. And for towns to gain a lot of stuff and ease in financial the state give it and the state take it away. And one of the things that was in the mobilization act was the towns now mandated by state law to have an independent yearly financial audit. And this happened back in two thousand fourteen, when there was a budget shortfall and this is the reaction of town meeting. They wanted the audit done and they wanted it put in the annual town report. But so that gets put in the annual town report, it increases the size and the cost of printing that. We were also posting on the audit on the town's website and it was being printed out to be presented to the board at a meeting per a board policy and financial management policies. So in the discussion of getting the annual report done on time and getting it to the people per our town by law to be used at annual town meeting. But we are except for two thousand nineteen, twenty, and I think twenty-one, where the audit was managed to be done by January. The following years, we weren't seeing it until March, April. Not in time to get the annual report printed and in the hands of the voters to be used at annual town meeting per mass general law. So the thing that was come up is why? Why pay for it to be printed in the annual town report? When we can't seem to get it early enough. So we take the requirement out that it has to be in the annual town report. The annual town reports can be printed without the audit, the audit is getting presented and put up on the town website, having been any raised. By not having the audit in the annual town report, we should be able to get them all the information in from the previous fiscal year, get it printed and in the hands of the voters in time to be used at annual town meeting. This is just, that's all it's doing. It's not really, you know, affecting anything in any, that in fashion. You still be able to find the audit on the websites, people still. However, I don't even read the entire audit.
What?
But the rest of that financial thing, I listened to the auditor and I listened to what his presentation says and the numbers and all that is good, it's good. So that's what.
You shocked the room. Sorry, Mr. Chan.
I almost fell out of my chair.
I, I mean, I went through it, but I don't, I don't try to. Yes, Ms. May.
Just a question. Um, I'm, I'm looking at article eight. Um, and I have a question concern. Um, it's the cable TV access cable department.
Yeah, I have the same one.
Um, it has uh, twenty-two thousand dollars in here. Um, it states twenty-two thousand dollar capital department for a supplemental approci- appropriation to its fiscal two thousand twenty-six operating budget in total. In aggregate, in aggregate, the sum of two hundred thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And to meet that appropriation transfer the sum. Now, I'm looking over here at today's BBA and it shows two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five as a total appropriation. So something in the numbers don't seem right. Just to me.
And, and also, um, Mr. Chair, if the money is not certified yet, if this goes to the floor and this is voted on, it'll be illegal. We can't vote on this unless the, is, do I have that correct? Something about the money has to be set before we could actually take this vote.
Yeah. I mean, you can't vote on anything unless, uh, unless it's already been approved by, by D O R or.
Yes, and that, and we don't know if that will happen by the time this election comes. So that was my concern because that can get us in big trouble.
Okay. So is everybody good with article one?
No, yes.
Yes.
So, uh, two is again, it's, uh, to amend a prior town meeting vote on the open space committees. Which, when it was originally voted and, and the wording is there, it was a committee of up to nine. And it would be between five and nine, but it had a quorum would be three. Not even the Templeton math, if that makes sense. To me, and they have three members. But that want to get on it, but they're not comfortable and they don't think, you know, how can that, that be a quorum? They're just so. And they can't function because then we have those three people. So I said, well, the solution is just not get to have a plain five member open space committee. They're an advisory committee pretty much to any board or committee that wants to do it. They work a lot with CPC. So, um, I'm just, I, I put this together to put in front of the board, to put in front of town meeting to just eliminate, amend that original vote and make it a five member committee. So three people will be a quorum. And they can function. They have three people right now that want to be appointed to it, but instead we can't act unless we have five. Cause they don't trust the, the three, you know, not five, nine, which doesn't make sense, but I wasn't around when they voted this in place. And this will just again, fix that and so they can be on their way. It's not really making any big changes, just
Makes sense.
Simplifying the numbers.
Makes sense.
The next three articles are CPA funding articles.
No.
And these have to be put on
Yep.
by law. Uh, these were submitted by the, uh, the wording and everything, the accounts, the amounts, uh, was submitted with by the county preservation committee. They voted at an open meeting to put this forward. And, uh, longtime CPC committee member, John Henshaw, was generally always at town meeting to answer the questions on these. Uh, the monies, uh, coming from various accounts with CPA and the, the funds are there. So. That is the gist of those articles. And this is the wording and I, when I typed out the, uh, draft of the town meeting, I sent it back to CPC, say, in goof ups here, did I miss anything? Did I mess up? Fix me now. And, uh, they sent it back and said it was good to go. Article seven is Narragansett roof repair, dead exclusion. If this passes at town meeting, it means we're to have to have a special election. Would have picked the board that have the call special election. Yes, the cost of about fifty-four, fifty-six hundred dollars. Uh, I asked, I checked with the town clerk, uh, and her she contacted the superintendent of schools to see if they would pay for the special election, which means we're paying part of it, but uh, depending if the other member town Phillips then votes to do this, then it would happen. But, um, the superintendent said he had to go in front of the school committee for that and they have not met yet. But it's, that's a couple of steps ahead.
I had, um, a question on this one. So with this, there's no provision that says like, if it, if, if, um, Phillips didn't does, doesn't pass. And so say this passed in Templeton and we went to the, the, the floor, I mean, the, um, the election and it passed both ways. And, and, and Phillips didn't pass theirs, then we're on the hook for the whole thing. Cause we have to.
That's an interesting legal question. I would assume not, because I would assume Phillips has to pass this as well. But I guess I would want to run that by legal counsel.
I just, it doesn't say anything about Phillips in, in the article. And I don't feel comfortable that it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't need to, but I just wanted that to be tracked.
And part of this is, yes, it's a, it's a lot of money, but, um, there was a chunk of money coming from the MSBA. So you have to, it's like when they built the elementary school, we had to borrow the whole forty-seven million, but we did not spend the whole forty-seven million. Uh, it's, I don't make up these rules and I don't really like the way it goes, but it's a two-member district. I have word from Phillips then that they were waiting to see what we would do. If we put this on a meeting, it doesn't mean they're going to, but if we didn't put it on, then Phillips then definitely wouldn't do it. But if we put it, it on, then they may, they may follow lead with it, or they may not do it. And then there would be no need for a special election because if both member towns don't do it, 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 it's, it's like the budget. If both towns have to approve it, if they don't, then it goes to one twelfth, whether Templeton approves it or not and Phillips then doesn't, we still go on one twelfth. It's not like if you have three or more communities where two say yes, well, the third one, you're dragged through the mud, where do you want to go or not?
Like I said, I just want to make sure that it says that, like if it goes both ways on us, that we're not like, and this doesn't pass or they don't do it. You know, once again, Templeton would be responsible. I just want to make sure.
So Leo counsel reviewed this and they must know by now that you're in a, um, regional school district. Um, so you could vote to approve this article pending that I get clarification from town council that if, if, um, we, if they shoot it down and we approve it, we're not on the hook.
Yeah, that'd be perfect if we could just get clarification that, yeah, if it needed to be adjusted slightly, if that was the case.
Yes.
If, if I may.
Yes.
To help muddy the water a little further, the night this was presented to us as a board, the week prior, the Phillips and board had a similar presentation with a lot more content that I don't know why was omitted with us. The night before our presentation, I went to the school committee as the liaison. And what was presented there was not what we saw as a board. I had a bunch of questions. Historically, Phillips and does not do a fall town meeting. I have not been able to locate where they have any intent of doing one. But with the deadlines imposed on this, if we don't move on this now, and if you remember the last presentation when Dr. Cassavant was here, there is an end of this month start date and a deadline for submissions. So we're backing up against the wall rather abruptly and quickly. I don't know what Phillips's intentions are, and that could kill this whole process right from the get-go. So if, if you can get some word from Dr. Cassavant, that would be great. I don't even know if he knows.
So, so you want me to ask, um, Dr. Cassavant if he, if he understands Philip, Phillips's intentions?
That would be great. So we know what's going on.
I just don't want, I mean, Mr. Chair, I just don't want this to go to the floor and then go to election. And then once again, we're the ones that pay everything. I mean, I know the roof has, we need a roof and it's a, I mean, in this, if, if we get that percentage, I mean, it's got, you know, it's a good, it's good, but at the same time, this is people's, um, bills that will be, you know, affected and we want to be responsible, you know, because I'm sure these are the questions that they want us have handled on the floor and want to, oh, they ask maybe possibly.
One thing about town meeting is just because the article gets there.
Yeah.
You can make a motion to pass over the article. Uh, according to our bylaws, we cannot do that until someone speaks to the article and it's an easy thing to do. Want to go down on the floor and say, Mr. Moderator, blah, blah, blah. Okay. I've spoken in favor of this article or somebody's, you know, spoke to this article and then I make a motion to pass over the article. If you find out that, you know, Phillips and said, now we're not doing that. So then you just pass over it and then you, you don't have a special election. But this has to pass because it's a contingent article to pass and then, uh, and it's happened before. It's a very tight height frame, but, uh, the town clerk will schedule a a special election. And the thing about this is there is a, a timeframe that's tight because MSBA wants to know. Why not giving this money to Narragansett? We got ten people over here that want my update or whatever. So it's, there's, there's that approach to do it. Uh, but if it doesn't get in front of town reading and they decide to do that, and then again, the roof is gonna, it, it, it's not gonna get better. And it, it could get worse and then we're gonna have to pay for it. And, you know, you're gonna get in that spot where you're gonna have to do it. I mean, where you're gonna have kids in school moving the buckets around and stuff. I don't want that.
They have.
Yeah, this wasn't Drake at high when I went to school. Come on.
Well, well, they've, they've done it there for the last so many years, but.
As you said, there is a, there are several things to do. If, if we prove this, we send it, you know, goes to town council. That, you know, they, they approve, they like this thing a second and we have time to contact the superintendent. I can reach out to the Phillips thing or the town administrator can, and hey, we're doing it. What do you guys think? If they just flat out say, nah, we haven't considered it, then we can just pass over this article. Again, but that would be town meetings called. This was you make a motion to pass over it, town meeting could. No, we're, we're gonna put it in place. Yes. Yeah.
So how can we, I mean, I understand, but with thirty-five current leaks and the, and, uh, all the rusted columns and beams, I don't see how we can possibly, um, let it go or even pay for it all. You know, twelve point eight, twelve point nine million dollars.
But again, it's a, you know, it's regional school district. So we, you lose control of, of budgetary stuff. It's.
Sure do.
I make up the rules. I just try to play the game. But again, uh, if it doesn't get, you know, I think we have an obligation to do it because of the MSA debt funding there. A lot of money to leave.
On the table.
You know, to say, well, the heck would it will, it'll matter a couple of years and then the bill, the bill's not gonna go down, it's gonna go up. You won't have the grant funding.
Or my understanding with MSBA is once you've lost your opportunity, you go to the back of the line. So it could be five, 10 years before you get another shot.
They'll be pushing up the daisies by the time to get in line again.
And they were talking fifty-nine percent, I believe. Mr. Ryan, you weren't here. We went through it. The Templeton Elementary School was a thirty-year process.
Wow. Yeah.
So, yep, it, it does get moved around and pushed back and delayed and yes.
Yep. So it's, as again, I, I think we just have financial obligation to, you know, not to let that MSBA money, it's not a guarantee, but it's there and we just, we cannot, not do. Yeah. Put it to in front of town meeting. They can do what they will.
Yeah, well, this, we were defects at this time. Hopefully when they get bonded, if there's a problem, then we can, it's like insurance that they, they fix it like, because the other section they didn't do, so. Or it didn't seem like it based on the presentation. They talked about that other section. I just don't understand that part, you know, it's like they knew there was a problem, they got it fixed, but then it's still not fixed. I didn't get that part of it.
And we have time to find out, gather more information. Get to.
Yeah. I think it was in the, uh, the contract with the, the first initial repairs. It was only the, the middle school side.
Yes.
And that was fixed, not the high school side. So. And now it's reversed.
But they can't touch that side, even though it's got, it's still got issues because of what happened. They, part of this thing, I guess that's what you said.
Life spans and hands off periods. Yes.
Yeah.
A thirty-year period where it's not touchable.
I'm just not understanding if it was bonded and they knew there was a problem and it was put in upside wrong or whatever they were talking about, why it wasn't addressed and, and they had, I mean, that's insurance. They just come in and they just, you do it back.
When we're saying bond, we're not talking a bond as an insurance. We're talking a bond as in how we're borrowing funds.
Okay.
The, the word is not totally interchangeable.
Right. But, but, but the, um, the crew that, that worked on it was bonded. And so if they do it right, and then you go back to them and then they have to pay for it to replace it. That's what I meant by bonded. Sorry.
Amen.
Yeah.
So again, we, we have financial obligation, I believe, to, to put this in front of town meeting and we have time to to gather more information that was done. Article eight is Mr. May that pointed out supplemental fiscal twenty-six, twenty-four cable department.
Does the board want me to check with the town accountant and what the actual appropriation is to confirm that the numbers match?
I can tell you what it is. Are you? Ball town, uh, annual town meeting, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents. So twenty-two thousand, we bring it up to two hundred and I'm looking at two BBAs sent out today by the town accountant that says our credit for the year is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty and fourteen cents. So I've made fourteen cents. But as she said, some of this still may not be accurate. But the appropriation at annual town meetings for one seventy-eight, and that's what I want by. The appropriation in the BBA right now says two twenty-seven, two fifty-five. Which BBA are you looking at? Well, I got just today. I got today.
Yeah, the one we got today.
Well, if the appropriation has, is that, as he stated, then, then the, then the chart of accounts. Well, if the appropriation is is that, as he stated, then then the then the chart of accounts that you're looking at is is moot. Maybe there's some accounting thing that town accountant has to mess with, but the appropriation is what you have to go by.
I would love the higher number.
I think that might be an old.
If if we're not at that point and she doesn't, she doesn't do it, then this could be article could be skipped over illegally. Can't vote on it.
You know, I mean, the the GL report that she's running is just out of our system, so it could be just, she's moving money around in accounting, but your appropriation is what you go by. When you are, and that's all they could spend, but when you are doing things like this.
Again, there is ability at town meetings to
Yes.
increase, decrease dollar amounts.
That's true.
We can have new information by then.
Hopefully, everything will be fine and you can just go to go.
Articles can always be passed over, they can always be amended, up, down. Again, I have early information.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify. The BBA that's in here is the end of the year, not the new one. So that number is gone. The two twenty-seven number is no good. But what I'm, what we're talking about presently.
And the last two articles, uh, two citizens petitions. But again, uh, downtown meeting floor, they were, uh, the signatures were gathered. You need minimum ten signatures for citizens petition for annual town meeting. Day of dawn, they returned into the town court, they were certified. Some way, Ron, a reason. Not sure clear on how or why it happened, but it didn't go from the clerk's office to our office, or it did, it didn't make it on the annual town meeting warrant. The the presenters of the petitions went down and said, hey, folks, and consultation on the on the stage and they were promised the family for that they would be placed on. Is they they, and they followed that.
Now, is that, is that these citizen positions that are in here or is it, is it through other?
There are three other petitions that were submitted. They were submitted too late to be on the annual town meeting. The warrant had already closed. They have approximately a hundred and twenty certified signatures on each one. There is a letter or an email from the town clerk that's told them that they did, they submitted too late, so. And that there's enough signatures they could go on the fall town meeting. I went through looking at emails from from Kelsey Schecker and Holly Young, going back to before annual town meeting, looking for that email. I could not find them. So I went into the office on Monday before our twenty-fourth meeting where we had the drafting. And the warrant had closed. On the twenty-ninth, I got an email from town clerk that, hey, well, these three citizens petitions. You know, and we put them on the warrant, or what? And she explained that they were put in late and they wanted to do this. But we had already closed this warrant. The warrant, the bylaw and state law says town meeting warrants will be open for a minimum of fourteen days. This special town meeting warrant was open for twenty-seven days. We opened it August twenty-seventh. And at another meeting, I stated in my comments that to remind people that the special town meeting warrant was open for citizens petitions. When came then, I went, spoke with the assistant town clerk, I said, are there any citizens petitions coming, any petition warrants in there yet? She went, looked in the book and come back and told me, no. So we had the meeting, we closed the warrant. Now the petitioners, you know, they're understandably, well, we were told this and blah, blah, we want to be on the warrant. The warrant is closed. It has been done in the past and the board can you know, the board can do it, open the town meeting warrant, insert those three citizens petitions and close it tonight. However, I might come in tomorrow and say, hey, I got a citizen's petition, I want on the warrant. Well, you can open that warrant and close it again because you just did it for them. It's a can of worms. There is a process, there is timeframes. And where were these people when the warrant opened, though it closed, and then come here and say, hey, you need these citizens petitions, go to the town clerk, you get them, you come to the board. It's, there was a process in place for a reason and it didn't happen.
I just want, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say something. When we took the vote on the twenty-fourth, we did it and said that there was any outstanding ones that you had not received from the clerk. The clerk sent it, um, sent these particular ones a a couple of times. I know you didn't receive them, but they were the 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 effort was tried to be to be there is what my my res- um, what I had asked um, to see. That's what I had found out. But the way we had voted on the twenty-fourth, we had said, if the first had anything that had, that she, that she had had that met the um, the criteria, then we could put on it. Well, their criteria was, it was, it was certified in May fourteenth. I mean, so it was certified way before opening, closing, and I've looked at other towns and I don't know if if, I mean, I looked at our bylaw, I'm not really sure. But some sounds will say, you go real early, get your stuff, and then when it opens and you can just submit it, it doesn't, it even if it's dated another date that's further back from the opening and closing, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything that says that the date of the certification has to be within those windows. Other than, you know, obviously estimate the uh, before the closing date.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think, you know, I I haven't seen these. Um, I just kind of had a conversation with the chair and um, changed a couple emails at Leo Council. But it's my understanding there's zoning changes of some kind. Uh, the bigger problem is that um that there's not enough time for this to go in front of the planning boards. There's a practical application problem. Um, so I I think it's up to the, it's the board's decision, obviously, but um, because there's a practical problem with it, it makes more sense to just to just um save this for the annual town meeting in the spring at this point, because uh, won't be enough time for planning board to meet and discuss and vote.
They were just able at the annual, last annual town meeting, according to Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section five on zoning. Where when we receive the petitions, you have to, the board has to notify the planning board. They have sixty-five days to have a hearing. And no, and then make a recommendation, send a recommendation for a town meeting. No zoning vote change amendment can happen without that recommendation of the planning board. Now for have them to have a hearing, they have to put notifications in the newspapers, because that's still the law. Then they have to hold the hearing, they have to get the recommendation. Again, this was when they submitted their citizens petitions to the annual town meeting, which the attorney general has still not commented on yet, uh, as of today. The planning board had just enough time to have a hearing and get recommended. It's it's the process. I don't make it, I just follow it.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say one thing, um, that in my research and looking like other towns and things, what I noticed is, and it might be helpful. Um, I don't know if something that James could do possibly, is to put like something together where if you're going to do a petition, this is the steps as a citizen that you can take and have that on the website or something, um, or someplace posted, or where they can get that material. Um, I know the clerk will give them stuff, but I'm saying, I noticed that a lot of this, of this, um, a lot of the different towns have had more um, more information and detail oriented to to help with these kind of situations, so they don't come arise maybe.
Zoning board amendment, um by law amendments, the place to go to start, you go into development service office and get and to get on the agenda for the planning board. The planning board chair went down on town meeting floor and and helped them out with the wording of their petition to make it more legal or or workable. Uh, he didn't have to do that. But uh, again. There are two petitions from December fifth, twenty twenty-four, was disapproved by the attorney general. The ones at the annual town meeting have still not been commented on. But again, if you, to make a zoning board, I mean, zoning by law amendments or changes, really the place to go is the planning board. Find out exactly what you gotta do and they they would know about this and then, again, it's a process and it's a timing thing. And it's it's how this town is traditionally done things, open the warrant for a certain period of time for citizens petitions. Yeah, this is chapter forty-eight is you put on the warrant, but unless they have that hearing and have the recommendation there. You 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 can't vote on the home with any business. So. Well, following the rules and law and accountability and it had, accountability has to go both of them. We have this and then we have a executive session. And a day thing. So you got these, what are the good, um, the warrant for a
Yes, sir. Yes.
Can I ask a question before you go on to your comments? I I didn't see um, any packet for today's. Will they be providing a new?
We were talking with the town administrator on that. He is working by himself, playing catch up, long research, line, line. Yes, the plan is, and to get the information to the select board more in line with our policy sooner and that, but.
Mr. Chair, also, all of this stuff that we used tonight needs to be scanned and then just added to the town whip's on, on my town government. Um, because we've used all these documents so that the, the anybody who washes this later, um, residents can see what we were talking about too, give them a better idea. I think would be good.
That was the intent. I I didn't know that, uh, they weren't gonna do that. They just posted the agenda.
Yeah.
I thought they would attach it to.
So we have one last item under old business and this would be to amend the select board operating policy, uh, this has been discussed at at least one other meeting. So it would meet the requirement to be a discussed at least one meeting before any amendments to the operating policy has. And this would be, uh to move our meeting day from Wednesday back to Monday.
Um, just one thing, Mr. Chair, do we, we're supposed to vote on the town meeting warrant for approval?
Is this then to this came from town council?
Yes, yep.
Leaving it as is? And then a motion to approve the warrant for the special town meeting November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. So move. I will second. Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing now on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Tough?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? I vote yes. Item two under old business.
Uh, Mr. Chair, would the board allow me to give some comments on this uh, topic? It's absolutely up to the board's discretion, but if the board would humor me for a moment. So after discussing with with my household, um, and again, I'll do whatever the board needs me to do, we'll make it work. But Wednesday is the worst day for for my household. It does, uh, once a month cause um a pretty decent burden. My preference, again, if you'll humor me. I I think there was a comment previously about um you know, doing doing the meeting in a certain day to to give, you know, employees like two full weeks. So it'd actually be Thursday. A Thursday night meeting would give us actually two full weeks after. Now, you know, it's, it's, you know, what's that phrase, um half a dozen, whatever. It's it's all the same. It's two weeks between each meeting, but you know, by that philosophy, Thursday would kind of be um, that night selfishly, and again, this is completely selfishly, but um if we have a late meeting, I have an hour drive home. If I don't have to, Fridays, I don't drive in to work, so selfishly, that is beneficial to me. After that, I would say um for 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 me, Tuesday um, would be the 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 next preference. Um, specifically because if the board chooses to go Mondays, which a lot of boards do that, you just have to be um be cautious of uh, all the Monday holidays that we have. So if you go Monday, it would just be something to be um, considerate of. Now, going back to the other days, the one downside with Thursday for the board is that you will probably have to consider just amending your policies to move the day at which you would like um the agenda and the packets to be sent out, probably moving it one business day forward. So that would cause you to lose the weekend. You'll, you'd still have um, you know, Monday night, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday day to review the packets, but some of you work and so it might be easier for you to have the weekend. So that kind of brings me back to Tuesday. If you chose Tuesday, you can um, leave your policy as is. It gives us on the staff side one extra day to to get you packets if if the meeting, uh, you know, isn't till Tuesday and we have it till Thursday afternoon to get you the packets. And then uh, again, Monday would be fine. You just have to be considerate of um of uh, the uh, the holidays. But in that case, if you chose Monday, you are, you still have the weekend, but you are losing a couple of days on the other side to review your packets. So um, Tuesday might be the ideal day, because Thursday does have that downside of you probably have to consider move um move, changing your packet policy. But my preference would probably be Thursday, Tuesday and Monday. But again, I'm gonna do whatever the board needs me to do. And so I thank you for humoring my comments.
Uh, we, not only the holidays, uh there are other boards and committees that would have to move their day. Uh, and we would have to, it's not it was matter of looking at the calendar and making sure, just make the adjustments. We would have to revoke our work plan uh, that we voted back in May, uh, because there were certain things that are gonna happen at this meeting or another meeting, so we just have to revoke that, uh, because the dates that it says, it's, you know. The second, fourth Wednesdays, we would have to change the days and look, um
Mr. Chair.
On the dates for certain, when certain things would happen.
Yeah, discuss it with the other boards and they're okay with um, switching from Mondays to another day. Wednesdays, yeah, they need to give us the uh Monday.
And to piggyback off Ms. Bassel's comments, um, the the select board definitely needs to be the priority as the chief executive of the town. In addition to that, you have all these um, staff people and In addition to that, you have all these um staff people and consultants who come to your meeting, so. Above all else, y- your meetings have to be prioritized. So whatever day you want, y- you should get and. With great respect to the other boards, they should have to move.
But just, it's just the fact that that has to happen.
Sure, yeah.
Well, I know that Tuesdays, um. We have a, a board on it that's been there for a while, may not want them. But um, I'm okay with Mondays if we have to switch. Um, I know that um, that Lisa has brought this up many times and um is asking for the. For us to go from Wednesdays to Mondays and I, I mean, I have, you know, it's not ideal for, for my personal life. But I, I would, I, I have no problem in, in making it work for myself, you know, getting it to work. So I don't have a problem with Monday. I understand the holiday issues too and, and the voting to change the, the things in the calendar. But I can just. I mean, you can do, just do a blanket one. You need every date. You can just say the second and the fourth week, Mondays. Revert it to those dates.
Have one quick one.
Yes, sir.
We have Thursdays, I'll, I'll work whatever we need to work. We can make this work. We do have other commitments and some of the liaison meetings that we attend occur on Thursdays. School committees. I believe one of the MRPCs is on a Thursday night, if I remember correctly, when I served on that. Couple of the other ones are during the daytime.
MRPC is generally seven P M on Thursday. The NPO and JTC are generally Wednesday afternoons, once in a while. And JTC is. On a different day. But MRPC is Mondays, uh, Thursdays, seven P M.
And both school districts meet on a Thursday night as well. Then there again, so we'll be spending up their two meetings a month, the Tuesday and a Thursday, so. Waiting to see what those dates come out as as well. But like I said, I'll make whatever work I have to make work.
I'd make a motion to uh change a select, change a policy. For the select board for, to have our meetings be from Wednesday till Monday.
My second.
Second, yeah. Second Wednesday, um, I'm sorry, second Monday. And.
The fourth, yeah, yeah, second and fourth week of the month. Mondays. Because I think that's how it's listed in the. You're welcome. I don't have the thing with me.
So from Wednesday to Monday, the second and fourth.
Yep, sir.
I, I don't know if you, if you want to make it a hard and fast second and fourth, because I don't know, I don't have to say holidays offhand that fall on those days. Not, I'm not good with that offhand.
There will be.
Yeah, so I don't know if, I don't. I don't know if you want the motion to be a hard, a hard second and, I think you.
I mean, I, I never understood, like I, I think that if you have a holiday. Because even on the Wednesday before the Thanksgiving, that's not ideal with the meeting, yeah, this board had those meetings.
So I'll just make the motion a little more broad to just say um, the two, two, you know, two Mondays a month and we'll, we'll have to figure out the schedule once, by looking at a calendar.
Select, well, amend my motion. To change the select board policy to have the. Uh, select board meetings. Um, change from Wednesdays to Mondays.
Uh, just say Mondays, keep it, keep it broad, yeah.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
And ask. Starting when?
Were you missing my claim? What are you missing my claim child for?
Effective immediately?
We'd just like to know.
You'll find out forty eight hours before the meeting.
You'll get the memo like.
So I assume the board would probably want to start having their Monday meetings on the twentieth because your next meeting, I believe, would be on the twenty second.
Yep.
I'm happy if, I'm perfectly fine if you want to go to the twenty seventh.
Twenty or twenty seven?
Twenty seventh would be fine. Like if um, if we have other uh first quarter. Folks to readjust. Give them a chance. You know, one of the worst.
Actually, that actually might help for health insurance because I think um. We, uh, your health insurance consultant, um, NFP wanted to give the board an update in, in late October. And so that actually gives them more time. But the twentieth is fine too, whatever the board wants will make work.
If the board votes to change to Mondays, the first Monday meeting will be October twenty seven?
Then the next one will be a Monday holiday.
Again, you can re-vote it to readjust.
I don't have that on my smartphone, but I believe that it will stay.
I think at the next me. I think at the next meeting, at the twenty seventh meeting, we'll have an agenda item to set the schedule for the rest of the year.
That would be perfect.
Fiscal year.
That'd be perfect.
So. On the motion? Hearing no further discussion. On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Thelf?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? This time I would entertain a motion to work past. Ten o'clock, ten P M?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Sorry.
Come on now. On motion to work past ten P M. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yeah.
Mr. Thelf?
No.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's the end of new business, old business. Hearing any further report, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna be quick because of the time tonight. Um. First, I just want to thank the select board and the town of Templeton residents who I look forward to meeting in the future and working with. I want to thank you for the opportunity. I'm really enjoying my time here. This week I spent time, an extended period of time, meeting with um. The public services director, the police chief, the fire chief. I did a couple of windshield tours with a couple of them, so I got to see the town from. You know, different perspectives because each of these people sees the town differently, you know, depending on their job. In the coming week, I uh. I have um, meetings with the superintendent, the light and water manager and the um, mart administrator. I also plan to uh, to hold a lunch for the town employees here that I will pay for. Myself, it's a great way to, for us to get to know each other, build a little team camaraderie. Um, and it's nice little thank you to the employees and if the select would would like to donate any money, feel free. Uh, similarly, I, I plan to hold an evening event. I would have normally done this sooner or at least have had it planned already. But other priorities and not having an admin and still. You know, getting to know the layland of town, I don't even know where to get food from pretty much, except for um. Uh, for Lee's Seafood, which they're closing down soon, but I've had some good meals there, so shout out to them. But I plan to hold an um, a night meet and greet so that um, other boards and commissions and volunteers can come um and meet me if they wish. I'm gonna buy pizza and, and some food now. So I will schedule that and let you know um, when that is. I also spoke with our property casualty insurance advisor who briefed me. As I mentioned, I also spoke to town council. I just want to. Thank um Harrington and Heap for getting um the warrant um back to us so quickly so that we could vote on it tonight. As many of you know, uh, one of my first tasks was to create a job description for the executive assistant in the select board office. Um, which I did and posted and I think we've gotten around ten resumes in so far, two of them I'm really interested in. And uh, when I can find a moment, I'm going to call and schedule uh some people for interviews. Uh, I still would like to get more in, have a bigger pool. But so we'll, we'll see as the days goes on, but I got two I'm rather interested in. And because of the time, I will wrap that up and again, thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you.
Christmas time, if you're still happy. Board member comments, Mr. May?
Yes, um, I have one comment. I just want to fill in the board. As you probably all aware, October first is the new enrollment uh, date for the. Uh, NRSD. And I've been in contact with the superintendent. I got a draft. Um, on the first, but where he asked me to give him two weeks to give him a final. Because they're still trying to sort out some issues with school choice and. Uh, if the kids are on school choice, if they're moving here, whatever the deal is. And I've sent a letter off and had a discussion with the uh. Uh, what's his, well, the uh. Yeah.
Superintendent?
Nope, um, Adam. Uh, in Phillipston. Um, to get housing data um, from Phillipston and I was told that. Uh, he would work on that and get back to me uh as soon as possible. And I've had talks with Rhonda and we're just trying to. Determine the easiest route to get the most accurate information rather than. Giving them a lot of work, searching through all kinds of stuff for, you know. A project. So I'm thinking probably by the end of the month, maybe the beginning of next month. I should have an update for you on uh, housing and enrollment in Templeton. But the one thing I can say right now. Uh, in relation to it, it appears that the enrollment at NRSD is down, I think sixty one students. And the draft has uh five hundred and eighty as the um, enrollment at T E S. So slightly down from last year. And uh. You know. That's the, that's the total um, in the school at any time. So. Uh, when I get further information, I will bring it to the board. Thank you.
Just a heads up to everybody, if you've not been paying attention, uh. Old Man Winter is about to show the ugly head tomorrow night and into Friday morning. Listening to the radio on my drive here from work tonight, the morning low for Friday is currently predicted to be eighteen degrees Fahrenheit.
Oh.
That raises a question and a concern for me about the status of scout hall. And what are our plans to prevent any freezing damage over there? That will probably need to be channeled over to Mr. Zosik. Because on top of everything else, we don't need burst pipes in that building.
That could be a couple of issues.
So as I say every time at this year, when our mother nature plays the game with us, keep an eye on your friends, keep an eye on your neighbors, especially the elderly and the young folks. And keep an eye on your animals, your pets and your livestock. That's all I have tonight.
Um, I really don't have much of anything. I thought this was a really good meeting. I think it went really well. Um, and um. Vote for James again.
Thank you.
And um, I will. That's it. I don't really have anything.
Um, I just want to, I want to say that art for season opened up Monday, um, so if anybody's heading out in the woods, remember. Red and orange, be safe out there.
Thank you. Uh, one quick comment, uh. There was a uh, the other day, there was a uh. Traffic accident, uh, police officer, Templeton police officer was involved. Uh, I reached out to Chief Bennett. And uh, I was assured and informed that uh, the officer Sergeant Fliss uh, is unharmed and uh, is okay. Uh, the police cruiser has got some damage, how bad. Still waiting on, but uh, the important thing is uh. Sergeant Fliss was fine and okay. Which is always good news. We can always get a new police cruiser. At this point. I move that to board, going to executive session on the Massachusetts General Watch after thirty A. Section twenty one eighty three to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation. Union personnel and discuss elective bargaining strategy with the loose local one fifty five, the dispatch local. One fifty five A union as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. And the J S O declares. The board will reconvene at different sessions only for the purpose of joining the meeting.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Bassel?
Yes.